Okay, welcome to Danvers to January 7th meeting at 6:30. We're running a little late, but that's okay. Diane, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes.
Please. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. If I can have a motion to approve the minutes of December 3rd.
Move to second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and one abstention. Thank you. At this time, if there's anybody in the audience that's not on the agenda with any new business, it's time to speak up, and I see a hand up over here. Mr. Bradstreet.
Bill Bradstreet, Tommy Member Precinct One. If you would indulge me, Danvers is a town. It's not a big bustling city. We have character. We're lucky enough to, kind of the paper, have an heirloom tree put in the square, which is decorated. Unfortunately, after Christmas, decorations are removed, and so is the tree. The tree adds flavor, color, however you want to describe it, to the square. All I'm asking is, could we, instead of taking it down two or three days after Christmas, could we leave it, say, until the end of January? It's going to cost so much to take it away, whichever day it's removed, I'm assuming. So couldn't we leave it there a little longer, so it adds something to the square? Please.
Thank you. We'll just ask the town manager to consider that with public works. If there's, certainly there's the 12 days of Christmas, we could leave it up through, but...
I'd appreciate it.
We'll just ask somebody to look at it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? No. The board is in receipt of an application from 72 Murphy LLC. Brian Murphy, owner for temporary staging to Occupy Sidewalk running along 13 to 15 Elm Street to repair the building facade. The town manager, somebody here to speak to that?
I believe the applicant is here to speak to that.
Ah, good. Thanks. Welcome, Brian. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Back a number of months ago, I ran into both Rich and Dave from the Building Department, and they asked me if the facade over 1315 Elm was in good condition. Never even gave it a thought. That being so, we sent the mason up to take a look at it. He started to do some work to secure, you know, to make it better. And after a day's work, he came back to me and said, you know, we really need to take part of this down, down to at least three feet off the roof line. So that's why we're here today, to petition to have the cover over the sidewalk while he takes it down.
Okay. Is everything in order, Mr. Clark?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As far as we're concerned, everything is in order. The only thing at this point in time, we don't know who the contractor would be, but all other documents are in place.
It's, Tony Campos is the masonry.
And do we have an idea of how long you'll have the structure up?
Well, the lint ladder says 30 days, but Tony said that he could have it done in five working days, depending on the weather. I don't know if he wants to proceed in January or not, but we'll see.
And so with the People's Bank, we gave them an extended period in case they ran into difficulties or some unknown. I think we could accommodate that as well? So we could go three weeks from the start that it goes up? Would that be acceptable?
That's fine, to me, yeah.
Okay. Any questions, David?
No, thank you.
Diane?
What's a facade?
It's the brick face that goes up in front of the building. If you look from the backside, it's probably above five feet tall.
Extends above the roof?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Right. And the ornamental ones, we originally sent them up there to take a look at those. Over the years, they've just deteriorated.
Yeah.
And so it really is time to take them down.
Okay. And have we come to the agreement that all staging now is all going to be all the way across like we did for, have we come to that agreement at Maple Street? So will this be the same, Mr. Chairman? Is this going to be the same staging?
Could be the same ruling that we did with Maple Street and Conan Street.
It's going to be 50 feet across the whole frontage.
I think, depth on the sidewalk, Brian, that's, the depth of the sidewalk, how far people are going to have a clearance to walk underneath it, like four feet?
I believe it's a four-foot entrance and staging, correct?
The building inspector just walked in, and the question, the question is whether staging at 1315 will be similar to what's at 44 Maple, where instead of having it flush to the building, it's pushed out so that the fall zone, I don't know if you want to speak to that, Rich?
Because we took two meetings to do that.
Right.
We want it the same way as 44 Maple Street.
Okay.
So we don't want anybody the ability to, the building's not as high, obviously. And this came about, there was a, the building's almost identical in Boston. The facade fell off a year ago. And it's funny, Dave and I showed up the next day, and we both looked at each other and go, Brian Murphy's building is exactly like that. So Brian had somebody look at it and agreed that we need to get it fixed, so that's why we're here. But yeah, we want it the same way. Lint ladder is going to do their staging, that's the professionals, and we'll make sure it's done exactly like 44.
Okay, just because, as we move forward, next we're going to be talking about the downtown. Consistency makes for less argument, so if we can just, that seems to be working over in Maple Street. You're happy with that? It's been through storms?
Haven't had any complaints.
I haven't been here for a storm yet, so, you know, so through storm and everything, nobody's complained about accessibility or...
Haven't had any complaints. We had to move up one of the barrels that were fixed. We got that out of the way, so we made sure we have a nice clear four-foot path between the staging, so.
Okay, so Brian, if you could just make sure that we're following that, that's great.
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, yeah, thank you very much.
Thanks, Brian.
Gardner?
I have no question for the applicant. He, 21 days is fine when he says he needs to start, but based on Diane's comments, and I'm wondering if Rich can't consider some sort of standardization of, so anybody walks in, say, this is what we require for, if you're going to go over the sidewalk. I agree with you, standardization's the key, stops any complaints or concerns, kills a lot of our questions. I'm all set.
Bill?
I'd hate to see you be limited just to three weeks, and I'd hope that we'd be able to empower the building inspector to allow him, not longer if he has to, if they run into some problems, or the weather becomes really bad. I mean, once you've got that up there, it's not right to have you make it taken down in three weeks, because you may need five weeks to do it, depending on the weather and when you're going to do it.
I would suggest that we gave the other applicant three weeks, because we said if you had a problem with weather or something that delayed you, you had an opportunity to come back before the selectmen.
But we just had an experience where they wouldn't have been able to come back to us in the last few weeks, because we haven't had a meeting in a few weeks. I don't want that to happen either, because, you know, it's not fair to the landowners that are having, improving their property down in the square. You want to get it done. They want to get it done. So I just assume, let it go longer than three weeks, if in fact it has to. And you never know what's going to happen to the weather.
Building permits, when it needs to be extended, is that done by the building inspector? Like if something, actually, there's no deadline on building permits.
Well, you start the project within six months of permits valid.
So, wouldn't this follow the same thing? No?
Well, no. I wouldn't want to leave it open-ended. It's not about Mr. Murphy. It's just in general, I wouldn't want to leave it open-ended.
So if I may, Mr. Murphy was told by his contractor they need five days, we're giving them three weeks.
I'm fine with that.
That should seem reasonable.
I'd like it done faster than that.
Of course, you'd want it done tomorrow. I appreciate that.
Yeah, well, the rental period is the four-weeks period.
Okay.
Whether it's done in one week or four weeks, I have to pay the four weeks.
You got to pay for it anyways, okay.
So make it four weeks.
Yep.
We could do that.
Yeah. Because he's not going to want to pay extra money.
In case he wants to get his money's worth and leave it up. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the public have any?
Is it?
No, it's not, I'm sorry. My eyesight is bad. What's the will of the board?
I move we accept the application and allow the applicant four weeks from the time of construction start.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, none, thank you. Good luck, Brian.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's good to see you.
A public hearing will be held on the application of KNS Golf Management Inc., DBA Endicott Grill, 194 Endicott Street. Scott McDonald, manager for two coders, entertainment licenses, and based upon a conversation the clerk had, we're going to also add plus a juke box. Thank you. Welcome. Please introduce yourself and tell us what you want.
Hi, I'm Dennis Rakoskus. I'm the manager at the Endicott Grill. Scott's actually the owner, but we're trying...
Dennis, what is your name, Dennis?
Dennis Rakoskus.
Thank you.
I can spell that if you want.
No, we got it right here.
All right. Yeah, we just have a couple of coin-operating machines we're trying to get a permit for. We have the, well, we have the duck-catching machine, and we have a Golden T Golf Arcade. And then we also have the juke box, which doesn't take coins, but they told us we should put it under the same application.
So, I heard you say you have.
Yeah, we had just got them in, and then they told us that we needed to get a permit.
When did you just get them in?
I'd say it was about a month, month and a half ago.
Okay, thank you. Bill, questions?
No questions.
Gardner?
No questions.
Diane?
No questions, good luck.
David?
Just wondered, if the juke box doesn't run on coins, how do you turn the music on?
You can either put in like a dollar bill, or you, most people use it from their phone. There's an app now.
Oh, really?
And you just play songs off your phone. That way, no one knows who's playing the bad music.
So remember the chord. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Anyone questions in the audience?
I move we close the public hearing. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed, none, thank you. What's the will of the board?
I move we accept the application as presented, including juke box.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Dennis, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
The board will consider endorsing an interim appointment to the Danvers Housing Authority Board. Mr. Town Manager?
Hey, Mr. Chairman. You received a letter tonight from Cynthia Dunn, Executive Director for the Danvers Housing Authority. One of their board members, Karen Hagan, recently resigned from the board. And on the backside of that letter, you'll note that at their regular meeting on November 13th of 2019, they discussed and voted to recommend Mike Swindell, who is a former board member, as well as a former employee of the authority, to finish out the unexpired term through May of 2020, at which time it would be a seat on the ballot for election.
And this requires a vote of the board of selectmen?
Correct.
Thank you. Mike, would you mind going to the microphone, introduce yourself to the folks at home and smile?
My name is Mike Swindell. I already served five years on the board, and I left to become a caregiver. And they called me and asked me if I'd like to rejoin the board.
And you're willing to do so, obviously?
Yes.
Thank you for serving. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Diane?
I think that's so wonderful that you're willing to come back and do this. You're probably the most qualified person in Danvers, probably know every inch of every building that we have, and you've maintained them so well. So really appreciate that you're willing to come back and do this. Volunteering takes a lot of time, so thank you.
Thank you.
Gardner?
I have no questions. I fully support the applicant.
Bill?
I fully support Mike. Mike, do as good a job for them as you have for the fair. We appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
David?
I endorse everything that my colleague Diane said about Mike, and I'm glad that you're very generous to the town to be willing to do this, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's the will of the board?
Move that we accept the appointment as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Thank you, Mike, good luck.
Thank you.
Mike.
The board will approve a transfer of funds, $2,342, from the Swamp Walk account to an account to support the rail trail. Mr. Town Manager?
Hey, Mr. Chairman. We have Aaron Henry, Director of Land Use, here tonight. He's really prepared this item, but these are funds that were donated to the town through the hard work of George Saludo. When the Swamp Walk was being developed, when that project was complete, the funds were transferred to the town. He fully supports now transferring the funds back to the rail trail, so that they can be used to support the Swamp Walk and the trail generally. And, you know, as a note, a couple of years ago, the town provided in-kind services and support to repair that Swamp Walk, and I would expect the same to be the case moving forward regardless of this transfer.
Any questions, David?
Thank you, Diane, no?
Diane?
No, I'm all set.
Gardner?
All set.
Bill?
I'm all set.
What's the will of the board?
I, to accept the transfer of funds as presented.
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, thank you very much. The board will hear an update by representatives from Danvers Cares, the School and Police Department, and the Board of Health regarding vaping. And just kind of as an introduction, I think we're all aware of the issue of vaping being banned. There seems to be, and I'm going to quote from a couple of newspaper articles, a Dr. Andrea McGee stated in her letter, or editorial, "The dangers of youth vaping, we must take action now." She says vaping is an epidemic. We have, in the Globe, there was a piece by Jeff Rossen, who's a postdoctoral research fellow at Harvard University, who says he nearly died from vaping. And studies will take decades to execute, and until then, we are all guinea pigs. So given some of the issues with vaping, and talking with Lyle Harret at, Lyle Harret at Danvers Cares, and the work they're doing with the students, and what work the Board of Health has done, and the police department's certainly involved, because there've been a few businesses cited for selling vaping products to minors. And I always have an issue when businesses are part of the problem, not the solution. So the town manager and I asked those three folks, entities, if they'd come in, just bring us up to date, what's going on in Danvers, going on in the world with this problem. And Mr. Town Manager, who do we want to hear from first?
Well, you received in your pack, it's a very detailed memo from Mark Carleo, our Assistant Health Director, and I believe it would make sense to start with Mark. We have a presentation prepared for tonight, and I, my understanding is that you'll hear from all of the parties you just named throughout the presentation, and then I think they would all be happy to have some questions from the board.
Great, wonderful, thank you. Welcome, Mark.
Thank you. We had some minor technical issues setting this presentation up in the back of the room, so it's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Whatever you want to do.
I'll be presenting from here.
Thank you.
So first, of course, I'm Mark Carleo, I'm the Assistant Public Health Director for the town. Just like to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the invitation and for us to the board. We're always happy to talk tobacco related and public health issues. So I wanted to start by just giving a quick overview of the authority that the Board of Health actually carries. The state law allows Board of Health to create reasonable health regulations. We've used this historically in a variety of issues that affect us locally, and there is no other control provided for, so the state government. In the case of tobacco, we have used it extensively, particularly over the last, I'd say about 20 years or so. Some of these notable requirements, I think, that we have created locally are listed here. Ban smoking in the workplace, for starters. Minimum purchasing ages beginning at 18, and then more recently, when we moved to 21, well ahead of the state or the federal government. We've, most recently, some of the actions we've taken is capping the number of permits that were available, so that we will not continue to see, at the time when we did this, we were expecting to see a rise in applications for 21-plus vape shops or retail tobacco stores. So that was meant to sort of curb the density that we were expecting to see. As well as the flavor restriction that we put in place, taking all of the flavored tobacco products, with the exception of menthol and methanol due to case law, and moving those into the adult stores out of the eyesight of youth, making them slightly less accessible. Of course, along with the policy that, or regulations that we implement, there is compliance enforcement that's gone. Our compliance checks are done by the North Shore and Cape Ban Tobacco Policy Program. This is a Department of Public Health-funded program that's existed for as long as I've been around. It was initially heavily funded through the tobacco lawsuits. They conduct our compliance checks, as well as more recently, in partnership with the police department. And the United States Food and Drug Administration does occasional compliance checks through the town as well, certainly much less frequently than we do, but we accept their, they send us their data as well. So just the last two years of complete data, 2018, we had one sale to a minor that occurred during compliance checks. 2019, we had six, and a couple of them were subsequent offenses. Some fluctuation is expected, but that caught us slightly by surprise. Overall, through the years, we've had very compliant establishments. So it was disappointing, of course, the board was disappointed. And it's causing us to kind of reexamine, not just the compliance and enforcement portion of what we're doing, but let's start looking at what's happening prior to the first illegal sale, and then also after the first illegal sale. Because currently, if you see the schedule of penalties that we have, here are fines associated, and then there can be additional penalties for subsequent sales, which include permit suspensions of seven days and 30 days. There's not really a mechanism that's occurring after that first sale that causes us to step into the establishment and really start looking at the education component that we provide. So that's something that, especially which we'll get into a little bit more with new state law that's been passed, that's actually opened up some educational opportunities. The board has also held suspensions in advance in the past, one very recently. And as a condition of holding that suspension in advance, they were required to provide very routine trainings for all of their employees, reporting back to me, who was in attendance, what was covered. And we're also sending in our Tobacco Policy Director, her name is Joyce Redford, into the establishment to do, I believe, two or three times a year, some additional education for the employees in that establishment. Most recently, you've probably seen in the news, an act modernizing tobacco control. This was very, very exciting for us to see, in quite a few areas. Some of those notable changes, the changes actually aren't going to be too drastic in Danvers. And the reason why is because we've always used our local rulemaking authority to stay ahead of things. And when we see trends nationally, we're able to act on those things rather quickly. So the flavor restriction, we already had in place, but this increases by including menthol and methanol, which were previously excluded, as well as our 21-plus retail tobacco stores that have been able to sell flavored tobacco products. As of June, they will no longer be able to sell those. Tobacco flavors, that's about it. So, and then lastly, flavored products will only be available in smoking bars, which we prohibit locally, in our Board of Health regulation. So we'll start to see, hopefully from this, a culture shift. That was initially how we addressed tobacco in the first place, particularly with environmental tobacco smoking. It was an expression that we were using back then, denormalizing smoking. So now our next step is essentially to repeat our playbook, because it worked incredibly well the first time. Let's start denormalizing, David. There are, of course, that's going to require a significant educational component, and we're fortunate to have partners like Danvers Cares and the police department with their school resource officers, DARE. So I think the combination of these, you know, collaboration that we engage in as frequently as possible, will really pay off on this particular issue. Lastly, let's see, I would end, if you're interested in a little bit about the vaping illness that's been occurring, and where that still stands. The news seems to vary, depending on the source that you're getting it from. So we typically take ours directly through, you know, public health officials. So if you look directly to CDC, who along with FDA is, you know, primaries for investigating this illness, it still remains a reportable illness under Massachusetts law. Vitamin E acetate, which essentially everybody is pointing the finger at, has not actually been identified as the cause, but it is very, very closely associated. So it's something that they're continuing to take a look at, but they're not ruling out anything else at this point. And then most of the cases were actually associated with black market THC in vapor cartridges. So I guess I would just end, unless you have any particular questions for me, by just reminding the public at large that it's never a bad time to quit. A lot of evidence demonstrates that the best way to quit is by using FDA-approved tobacco cessation devices and products, not vaping, in combination with some sort of support, including the Massachusetts Quit Line. And they've also finally started developing some more, you know, new age digital tools, texting when you're having a craving and you get a reply back, counseling, essentially. So, you know, just to remind the public, it's all about, you know, a positive attitude going into it. It's hard, but everybody can do it. So with that, unless you have particular questions?
Thank you, Mark, very well presented. Bill, any questions?
No questions, thank you, Mark.
Gardner?
I just want to say, I have no questions. I just want to say that I think you, the Board of Health, the police department, DARE and Danvers Cares, doesn't get the recognition of being proactive and progressive as they deserve. We've been on the forefront of a lot of the, what's up and coming as state and federal laws, and I appreciate you being proactive and progressive in these matters.
The Board of Health, we certainly appreciate the compliment. They spend a pretty significant amount of time conducting our research, reviewing the evidence, talking to the experts, all the hearings, listening to the stakeholders. It's a process, and we've used it repeatedly through the years, and it seems to work.
I appreciate you being on the forefront.
Absolutely.
Thank you. David?
Thank you, Diane. Mark, what is a THC vaping product?
So, where you can vape tobacco products, or, you know, nicotine in an oil. So THC vaping products are concentrates or distillates of marijuana, and are essentially, so in this case, there was, other components are added to it, glycerin, the vitamin E acetate, which is meant to, well, change its texture and thickness, as well as terpenes, which provide flavors and others.
I also want to compliment the Board of Health, and also your excellent presentation. Fortunately, I haven't done nicotine for almost 30 years, but when I did it, I did it enough for four people every single day. And I had a very close relative who died very young, and that person, while using oxygen in a hospital bed in her own housing unit on a tube, was still smoking two packs of cigarettes a day. What I mean to say is, of all the addictive substances I have ever come in contact with are known, not so much in my old, I was too old growing up, but nicotine and tobacco, I think, is one of the most deadly things that I have ever experienced in my life. So this stuff that you're doing, I think, is very important, and I'm glad you presented tonight, and thank you very much for your work.
Yeah, I appreciate you sharing the personal story. I mean, I actually have a similar thing. I started when I was about 11 years old.
11, that's the magic number.
On and off until, actually, I believe, 2016 or so was when I quit. It was two packs of menthol cigarettes a day. Yep, hardest thing I ever did was quit.
Well, thank you, Diane.
Welcome. Diane?
You weren't 11 years old 40 years ago.
I said I started at 11, and I didn't say it was, no, it wasn't 40 years ago.
So I am a product of the '70s, but this is something that is definitely new for me. So just a couple of things. You said menthol was one of the things they said could still stay in, but I thought I just read that there's been a ban on menthol cigarettes.
So to clarify, originally, the local flavor restriction that we had put in place, I don't have the exact date, I'll have to tell my head, but let's say it was a year and a half, two years ago or so, that excluded menthol and methanol products. And that was because our prohibition of flavored products from retail stores was based on a case from a federal court in Chalkville, and that excluded menthol and methanol. So all we did, because it had already been challenged, and this public health prevailed in this case, we just took the exact language and used that. And that's what communities across the Commonwealth had done. Most recently, there were a few communities, off the top of my head, Somerville, maybe Swamp Scott, I believe, there was a few, anyway, there was a few communities that included the menthol, and then those were met with legal action, of course. We were kind of watching to see where these cases were going to go and how they would pan out before we would start getting involved in prohibiting this locally, and then the act came across and took care of the forests.
When it comes to the fines, and you said you close, or that they have to close, or stop selling seven days or whatever, is it like a liquor violation that they close? Or is it just that they have to stop selling tobacco products? Like, I'm thinking of a corner store type thing.
Yep, so the permit that we issued was specifically for the tobacco products, and that is the permit that we suspend. So while we could be in a store that holds both a food and tobacco permit from the Board of Health, we only take the tobacco portion, and then those products have to be removed from the store and off premises.
Off the premises?
Yes.
Okay. And THC outside of retail, so does that mean that vaping products from the new retail marijuana stores, those are legal? Those aren't what you are saying are a problem? Is it the black market vaping products? Is it?
Yeah, so the data that's been collected, I want to say it was in the 60s percent-wise, pointed towards black market THC cartridges, so not from quote-unquote legal dispensaries. Those products were specifically addressed by the Cannabis Control Commission. Boards of Health were not asked to address those during the vaping ban that had occurred through Massachusetts. Yeah, so there, I mean, of course, like pretty much any other substance on earth, there is certainly a significant black market. It seems that's where most of the companies. There's one particular brand that was mentioned repeatedly, which was something Dank Vapes, or I can't even believe I'm saying Dank at a public meeting, but that was the brand.
I don't know what it is. So, you know, I think people sometimes think we go overboard in restriction and all this, and obviously, everybody noticed I disappeared for a while because they keep asking. But I was in California, and I went up to visit a friend in Santa Barbara, and Aaron, you'll love this, that she asked me to come up because the farms up there, think of, don't think of small farms, think of Appleton Farm, all around their high school, all three sides of their high schools, so think of all of Woodville, think of Princeton Trinity, think of Burley, have all switched now to growing marijuana. It's literally right next to the football field, right, it's amazing that their zoning never dealt with this. Not only is it really close to their high school, but if you haven't smelled pot lately, it smells like a skunk. So the neighbors, the students and all, they can never open a window, and the whole mountain next to them burned down. Imagine all those plants going on fire. That would have smelled ridiculous. So they are just dealing with that now. So when people think we panic, staying ahead of things, that's probably the next thing we're going to have to stay ahead of, is our farmers are struggling, and I'm guessing that if California's doing it, it's going to come this way. So I think it's great that you're staying ahead of this. You know, I always, you know, I'm not a big person on lawyers, my son's one, and they argue about everything, but I know, you all do. But we were at a Patriots game, and somebody was vaping, and you think the young people are accepting of this. I was shocked when he was right on the guy, I'm ready to tell him I'm going to lose my season tickets, but they don't accept it. They don't want the vaping around, it's just like cigarettes, that they're not accepting of this going on. So it is something new, there's a reason you're staying on it, and I think it's great. Danvers has always been ahead for good reason, so thank you.
Is there a question from the audience? I see a hand up in the back.
Bill Bradstreet, town meeting member, precinct one. One thing I didn't hear you mention as a helping aid is helping someone quit cold turkey. Is that something you offer? I haven't had to use it, but I've heard some people have just stopped cold turkey. It's very difficult, I believe, but it can be accomplished. Is that something that you can talk to people about?
It's, we have, yeah, we've received questions about, you know, how do I quit? Where do you start? Cold turkey is not something where we usually recommend somebody starts, simply based on the evidence, that people tend to be more successful at curbing their nicotine addiction through using FDA-approved cessation products, as well as some sort of, you know, counseling and support. So, no, we really don't talk about cold turkey so much, simply because of the availability of these other products. And especially this recent law that passed also changes some of the insurance requirements, where there is some coverage that's required now for, at the pharmacy, when you purchase patches, lozenges, gum, and so on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. You have a good grasp of your responsibilities, and I appreciate that. And please extend my gratitude to the Board of Health for staying ahead of these issues. I'm sure are unfortunate to be others in the future as well, but thank you.
Thank you all.
Lila is next.
Welcome.
Please introduce yourself to everybody at home.
Hello, everyone. My name is Lila Harrod. I'm the Director of Danvers Cares. So thank you for helping us, for putting this presentation. Really happy to be here. I'm just talking about youth interventions that go on in Danvers Public Schools. Again, I'm coming from a prevention sort of angle to it, so I'm not a medical professional. I more work in the community and with parents. We'll talk about that more. So the vaping rates in Danvers Public Schools, we, every two years, we do the Youth Risk Behavior Survey to track risky behaviors in youth. As of 2018, DHS 30-day usage is reported at 27%, and that's a huge jump up from 6% in 2016. That coincides with the advent of Juul and those disposable vaping products that were easy to conceal, or the popularity of them, not just the habit. As of 2018, the middle school lifetime usage was reported at 7.5%. So again, it's just more, it's more helpful to look at lifetime usage when it comes to middle schoolers, because the percentage of 30-day usage is not as usual at this time as much. So we'll be administering the YRBS survey again in the spring of 2020. We'll be adding some questions around perception of harm, so how dangerous young people feel it is to be, perception of parental disapproval, so how bad do they think their parents think it is? It's not how bad do their parents think it is, it's how bad do they think their parents think it is, because there can be a difference there. And the same question, so perception of peer disapproval, so what do they think their friends think and feel about it?
Lila, before you leave that screen, how do you go about collecting the data from the students?
So the, it's, there's a basic survey from the CDC that they provide every two years. We use a lot of the formulaic questions that they have in there, so that we can match trend data, and then we turn them into a, like, it's called Google Forms, if anyone's familiar with that. It's just an easy way to aggregate a lot of answers and come up with some visual representations for the responses.
So you request the students to fill out something?
Yes.
A data source?
It takes about one class period, so it's the entire school would be doing it at the same time, or the entire grade or.
And how many of the students requested actually respond?
So you can, the parents are allowed to opt out. That doesn't typically happen, though. You know, we make the questions available ahead of time if people have any questions or concerns, but, you know, we've selected the questions to be appropriate and to work at the school.
All anonymous?
Yes, 100% anonymous, yeah.
And so you're satisfied that it's reasonably accurate?
Yeah, it's reasonably accurate, for sure. Of course, you're going to have your, like, you know, there could be people that you, like, end up taking away their answers or wiping those data, so you just try and take away the furthest outliers. So, for, you know, example, it'd be someone on a test that just does Cs all the way down or something like that, that person, their responses would be weeded out.
Okay, thank you.
So addressing vaping as a school community, we have three main strategies, parent education, school-based strategies, and youth-led initiatives. So parent education, that just focuses on addressing parent concerns via in-person conversations. So we do do a lot of sort of district-wide initiatives, but we found that the most successful conversations are in-person and based on school to school. So for example, I am going to the upcoming Great Oak PAC meeting to talk to them and present directly to their parents at their request, so providing information based on what the parents are looking for, based on what their specific concerns are. So just tailoring your message to your audience a bit. So for school-based strategies, we use curriculum and behavioral health support. So we actually just recently started the Catch My Breath curriculum, which is sort of a nationally recognized curriculum for vaping prevention, and we're administering that in ninth and 10th grade during phys ed and wellness courses. The Curriculum Center did a great job of working that, working them seamlessly into the, their pre-existing lessons, so that's actually been ongoing and something they're, they've said has gone really well from the feedback I've heard from the instructors. And then also, I also wanted to mention the Behavioral Health and Referral Services, such as the PAST program, the Positive Alternatives to Student Suspension Program that's over in Beverly at the McPherson Center. That's been a nice, successful program, offering suspension diversion to an alternative to getting a suspension. You can go and work with behavioral health counselors, you can do a lot of the, sort of learn some of the prevention strategies and some of the cessation techniques that can help young people quit vaping and make good decisions.
And Lila, you say that this is located in Beverly?
Yes.
But it's available to Danvers or other communities regionally?
Yeah, Danvers is one of the partner organizations. I'm not sure of the number of communities that are in it, but yeah, it's a.
Day version of Reform School?
Sorry.
Day version of Reform School? Is it like a day version, a day program of Reform?
Oh, Reform School? No, I would not put it like that, no.
That's not a word.
No, 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 it's not, not quite like that. Yeah. I can't really speak specifically to their programming, I wouldn't try to, but I know that it's based in behavioral health. All right. And then so moving on, the youth-led initiatives, that focuses a lot on developing those positive social norms, which is basically having people think, you know, don't make people feel bad about their doing negative behaviors, make the people who are making the right choice feel good about making the right choice, and show those people that when they're making the right choice, a lot of times, they're in the majority, even though it may not feel like that. People, a lot of times, will queue in on the people who are, you know, they'll see one person vaping, and it feels like everybody is. They start to think that everybody is, but that's not, that's just not the case. So the student, there's a lot of different student groups that have been involved. The DECA class, Danvers Cares, obviously, SAD, and SUFA. They put together campaigns, like for example, the hashtag Why You Matter campaign, which you've all likely heard about, with the goal of combating negative self-image and encouraging healthy choices. So by bolstering young people up, it gets easier to not, to continue making the good decisions for us.
Thank you, Lila. Diane, any questions?
So just out of curiosity, how many parents now show up at a PAC meeting?
It depends school to school.
Are we getting good showing? Because never, I went to those and I was kind of disappointed, I have to admit, so how are we doing?
The numbers are small at PAC meetings, but I think, as Lila said, we try to work with our principals in the PACs to have programming that is fitting for them and what is of interest. So hopefully, we will be able to have more parents come in. What we do find of, for our parents, it's the piece where if there's a student performance, like for acapella night last week, the auditorium is filled, so we try to bring in more parents through the academic programs and different performances that, or student-led conferences at the middle school, and we'll get a high number of parents to come.
Hopefully, you'll draw, Lila. So then the other one that, this path for suspension, what are they suspended for? What are the, who are the students that get to go and try to rehab instead of being suspended?
Sure, it can be any suspension. So we, this is actually through our North Shore Education Consortium, mainly that's through our special ed services and different programs in Beverly, but we've also started a collaboration with the Beverly Y4 that was called the PAST program, the Positive Alternative to Suspension, that there's many times where we don't want a student that may need to be out of school, always suspended and being at home, but if we can do proactive pieces with them, that's going to be more beneficial. So it is an option for our families and our students to participate. So it really can be any suspension, but they do have, as Lila said, the behavioral health pieces of it. So it may be supporting a student with vaping and smoking cessation, or it could be other types, it could be anxiety, depression, they'll work with the families and the students.
But what we're talking about today, so is this somebody who catches vaping on the school ground?
Yes, thank you.
Something like that?
Yes.
In their locker or something?
Yes.
So we first try to get them help, I'm totally into that. And then, so I used to say this before, but it used to be that coke was cheaper than pot, and so that all switched around. So what's the cost of these vaping tubes or whatever?
I would not be the best person to answer that. I don't know.
I mean, you said, I'm just curious, because we give kids too much money.
Off the top of my price, off the top of my head, I can't tell you the exact price, but with the recent state law that passed, there's a pretty significant tax, I want to say something in the.
Seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent, in order to bring them into, in line with traditional tobacco products.
Lila, thank you for all you do. I am so in favor of first rehab and then punishment, and I really think that's great that we've implemented that, so thank you.
Goddard?
I am all set. Thank you very much.
Bill?
I'm all set, thank you.
Anybody in the audience? Nope. So, Lila, thank you very much. I appreciate the work that you're doing, Danvers Cares, and the schools, and the community. Making healthy choices is so important, and just giving the kids the opportunity to make that choice is very important, and thank you for your presentation tonight.
Thank you.
Chief, welcome.
Good evening. Happy New Year.
Thank you.
I'm the Chief of Police. I have with me Sergeant Steve Baldassari. He's in charge of the Community Outreach and the Juvenile Section for the Department. As most of you know, that he was a longtime SOO at the high school, so he's been well vested in all of us, all these issues that are dealing with the youth in the community. Steve's well-versed on the vape issues that we're seeing with the kids in the schools. So with that, I figured it would be best to, you could hear it straight from the expert.
Welcome, Sergeant.
Didn't put too much on. I was feeling the pressure getting up in front of a high school, an ex-high school teacher. So anyway, Sergeant Steve Baldassari.
Just to get to the mic.
Born and raised in.
You need a mic. Yeah, sorry.
There are people at home listening to you.
I'm going to walk back.
Take the mic with you. Will it go?
Sergeant Steve Baldassari, 21 years on Danvers Police Department, born and raised in town, Smith School, Great Oak School, middle school, high school. Currently the ISAC coach, coach of baseball, so I'm pretty well, let's just say that I fit in pretty well with a lot of the students in the town in many different ways, and this has become a bigger problem than I think we all think. In school education for SOOs in collaboration with health and education curriculum, we have three SOOs assigned to our unit now. Mike Chase is at the Essex Tech Regional High School full-time. Officer James Scan is at the Holden Richmond Middle School, and Officer Jeff Smith is at Danvers High School. Officer Smith and Officer Scan also split up the elementary schools and St. Mary's, and we all kind of share with change in St. John's Prep. So we're all in these schools on a weekly basis. Those officers are dedicated to those schools. Dare Curriculum will be resuming in January with updated lesson plans on vaping. Officer Scan just completed a two-week, 80-hour Dare Academy up in New Hampshire, where he'll be starting on January 14, the new Dare Curriculum, which will include a big piece that will be on vaping. Dare America's latest health report documentation has 1 in 10 eighth graders use vape, and the percentage of high school students doubled from 11% to 20.9% in 2018. I don't have the numbers for 2019 yet, but I'm going to assume that those probably have increased. So how do we prevent this from continuing? How do our offices and our education teachers prevent this? It's got to be through education. It has to be education through the students, but it also has to be education to the parents. And parents don't realize the similarities between the vape, between tobacco. A lot of parents believe that the vape is secondary to tobacco. They believe that this is a better alternative for them. Why? Mango, strawberry, blueberry, cotton candy, I could go, there's a list and a list, pages of different ones. So they see that, and they think that, oh, this isn't Camel Felt is, or Skull Tobacco. tobacco. You know, I did it when I was a high school student, so therefore, this must be a little bit better. So we need to really get to the parents. We're doing that through the children, through the students. We, we offer, all our parents that we talk to, unfortunately, the ones that may get caught with them when we call home, we have conversation, we invite them in so we can try to educate them as best we can. Sometimes the message might not get clear to the parent through the, to the student. So that's, that's one of the biggest pieces, the parents that are overlooking those health issues. SROs and school administrations are monitoring specific locations throughout the day to prevent sale and use of vape products. They love seeing us in their favorite spots. We know where the little hidden areas are, where they can either make a sale, or they can get a quick hit, or we don't necessarily, can't be going into bathrooms and hang out those areas, but we can be visible, we can be at the taryn in those areas. And I think our school administration, our staff, along with the police department, has done a really good job of being in those areas, especially lunchtime, before, after school, when students are passing from class to class, usually the, the prime times. Just to move this forward. In June, when we had our promotion, our promotions, our division started the first North Shore School Resources Officer Group. It met at the station in November. All the North Shore SROs, we're already familiar with each other from our summer dare camp that we do together. And we talked about it this summer, and a good friend of mine, an officer in Saugus, was just recently promoted, and so the two of us decided that this would be a good idea if we'd start to get together, you know, maybe every other month, or, you know, maybe at some point every month, just to share some of the things that we're seeing in our One of the biggest, one of the, one of the toughest things is the concealment methods, is trying to find, and as I, as I have this board right here, this is from all the different schools, not just ours. All the different products, and you can see how small some of the pods can be and how easily they can be hidden. I brought a couple of, a couple of props here, just the normal Mountain Dew can, but it can screw the top, it's a concealment can. Unfortunately, this was found at Danvers. One of the things that we, we found out, that I got from Swamp Scott, was elastic bands. If we see students wearing elastic bands around their wrists, we know that they're actively vaping at that time, because the product will be in their pocket. And the elastic band, when they're not vaping, they can wrap around, so when they put it in their pocket, it will stick inside and it won't fall out. So it's one of the things that we...
Oh my god.
Through, yeah. There are hooded sweatshirts out there with smoking strings that are for sale online. There are Gloucester PD just recently got a nine-volt battery, looks just like a regular nine-volt battery. You unscrew the, the little top of the battery, you can put a double-A battery on it, and you can smoke out of it. We have thumb drives.
Excuse me, Steve. There's an easel back there, you know, people at home can't see that, and I think most of us don't see this stuff. So can we put that in line of the, over there where you are?
Put it right over here.
Came right up there, Stevie.
Yeah, just because, I think there's a lot of people that...
Mark, it might be better off, no, put it so you can see on those cameras there, so they can see it at home.
Yeah.
Put it over here in the middle of the room.
Yeah. Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no, you thought of it.
That's why I brought it. Like I was saying, some of the other concealment methods are flash drives, thumb drives, keychains, you know, the coke cans, they get really creative, water bottles. The nine-volt battery was, was one that I'd never seen before. That was just recently, you know, within the last month. So, so the detection is very challenging. So that's why Danvers Cares puts on events like In Plain Sight, which was a great one. We've actually been sharing the In Plain Sight props that we put together two, two, three years ago with just about every high school in the area. We're constantly taking it out of a lot of his hands and giving it to a new high school so they can run their programs. So we've got three, four pockets, good-sized pockets, full of different stuff that we've just accumulated over time. So, showing parents that, so when they walk into their son or daughter's bedroom and they see these things, they might have a little bit better of an idea of maybe something is going on. Oh, also, on our first North Shore School Resources Officer Group, I heard Joyce Redford's name mentioned. Joyce is from the North Shore Board of Health Collaborative, the KPA Tobacco Program. I've worked with Joyce a few times on enforcement, and she came to the meeting and spoke, and I introduced her to all the officers, and they've been now flooding her with phone calls. So she's now really a point person for us and in the North Shore with all the PDs. Like I just said, Danvers Police Department, the North Shore Collaborative Tobacco Department conducted multiple compliance checks since April 2018. I know Mark touched on it. There were six violations of illegal sale tobacco. Just recently, the last one we did was not a vape product. It was a tobacco product, but it was not a vape product, so happy to say there were no vape illegal sales. The challenges to vaping prevention, out-of-state purchases are probably the biggest that we see, or the least that we're hearing. Internet purchases are fairly big. It's pretty easy to just, you know, a lot of these high school students are, know, know how to put it on their computer a lot better than I know I do. And, but then again, it's really not that hard to just click the box that says that you're 18, and you can buy whatever you want and have it shipped to your house. So again, there's the education piece with parents, knowing that this box has come to the house that they didn't maybe pay for, or they didn't order, and, you know, has their son and daughter's name on it, and they just hand them a package and not really go through and see what's inside there. Heard that one a few times. Private sales, products are now being bought and sold similarly to illegal narcotics. One investigation that we worked on for a while, probably eight months into a suspect selling vape products out of the trunk of a car, it didn't end up with a result of illegal sale of, of tobacco or vape products, but that seizure did come with a large amount of JuPods, which are these small, these small JuPods, which have a liquid inside, a large amount of those. And then criminal charges of possession of Class C, and there were also motor vehicle charges in, in that case. Dabbing is a word that you'll hear a lot, it's the act of heating in oil or wax of concentrated THC. I know Dave, you were asking about THC earlier. The part of the cannabis plant that produces the high, that's melted down, and that's what the, what the students are inhaling, those vapors. The vape or the dab pens and the JuPods are used to smoke this liquid THC, which I would say prior about a year ago, we had no methods of testing any of these liquids to see if they actually had THC in them. Now we have swabs that we have at the department, and we share with the, with the SRO group. So now we can swab this liquid, and we can see if there's detected, is any THC inside. The process of extracting the THC in the oil in dab form is highly combustible and extremely dangerous. I know last year at the high school lawn, I showed numerous students pictures that I had on my, my computer of, of other high school students around the United States with large burn marks and, and severe burns from these vape products. Something else, just to quickly move on, one of the, one of the mysterious pieces to this is fentanyl. The recent reports that fentanyl are highly potent synthetic opioid, 50 times stronger than heroin, is now being smoked via vape pens. And as of right now, there's two deaths attributed to fentanyl vape captures nationwide. And there's also other reports of THC captures laced with heroin and fentanyl. Working in the drug unit for 10 years, it's not uncommon for drug dealers to put a little something extra into their drug, try to get you to buy theirs. Theirs is stronger, theirs is more potent. So, it's all about who's going to make the sale. And you got to think, it's not going to be long before this really starts to happen. Just to finish up, one of the, one of the things that I always try to end when I have a parent meeting, a lot of these parents will come to the In Plain Sight meetings or PAC meetings, or, or they'll meet with us in our offices, and you can tell that they're, they're embarrassed, because they didn't put some extra time into, to what's going on up there. Getting on social media, going on their, their children's phones, going through their children's rooms. You know, I, I tease them a lot, and I try to, you know, be, be light with them and say, it's your room, you pay for it, you're, you're letting your child sleep in there, you have a right to go through there. And lots of times they'll say, oh, you know, I don't want to, you know, invade their privacy. I said, well, when you go into their room and it's a mess, and it smells like mango or blueberry, that's probably a tip that something, something may be going on in that room that you might want to, you know, get in and, you know, take a peek at, so. We have a really good relationship with Danvers Cares, the Danvers school system. Work together with them on a, on a daily, if not, a weekly, if not daily basis, so we're very lucky to have that relationship. Thank you for having me, I hope you answered a lot of your questions.
Thank you, Steve. Gardner, questions?
No questions, thank you.
Bill?
Steve, you've come a long ways from TV1. Great, great job. I'm very proud of you and the chief, and a lot of my other students out there that are joining us. I, I just can't fathom the challenge that you guys have gotten. I appreciate this little bit of education we've gotten here. It reminds me of a session that we had probably 30 or 40 years ago at the Danvers High School Library with Roger Seer from the police department, when he had two tables of all kinds of drug paraphernalia, alcohol paraphernalia, I'm sure. Chief, you are probably, you knew Roger, and you knew how smart he was in that area. He, he educated us on that afternoon, it was an unbelievable education. And I, I don't envy you in the least doing what you're doing, but you've got some great SROs in town here, and keep up the good work. We're very proud of you.
Thank you.
David?
Thank you, Diane. Steve, you have a great reputation. You're a great credit to the department and to the town. One of the things that I don't know the extent to which anybody can pay any attention to is addiction is everywhere, whether it is fentanyl, alcohol, you name it. Driving a car fast, or as I did on many tobacco products and other things. I don't know how, you know, this is wonderful, to teach people that this stuff is dangerous, to prohibit it, to try to stop the flow of it. But I don't know what we do about addiction and young people becoming addicted. I think that anybody in this world, half the people have to have one addiction to even survive. Unfortunately, it is often a chemical or deadly one, something like you are trying to control. So, so good luck, and the, the opening piece that always gets me worried is, how do we deal with the fact of addiction, that it happens? This is addictive stuff, and addicts will usually find a way to get their stuff. But I guess that's, you're working on that. Nice work. Thank you for coming.
Diane?
So, you, you mentioned that the middle school is, is it tobacco? Because, you know, I'm out of the loop now, not having a kid in the school system, and so you kind of get out of the loop a little, and I only know what I read. So, it seems that tobacco seems to have been what's really come back to the younger, are you seeing marijuana product as much as tobacco?
I'm seeing the vape products. Like I said, the concealment piece is very tough to detect for parents, teachers. You know, it's real simple for a student to walk down the hallway with a, with a hoodie on and just have their, you know, hand quickly go up and take a whack of a, these right here is what they call a throwaway, where they can just, they just buy like this, comes in a box, it's 20 to $25. They take 100 whacks out of it and throw it in the trash.
Is it tobacco, though?
Yes.
So, when it...
It could also be THC.
Okay, so when you're finding the THC products, is it the black market, or is it our legal retail that, that, because you can tell the difference of where it came from, right?
I would say 90% of the time, it's black market. 90% of the time, it's, it's sales across the border. Right now, especially with the ban, it's, it's sales from online is huge, it's communication online. We, we all know the social media, the Snapchats, messaging, you know, how things can be hidden that way. That, that's the majority of where the sales are coming from. Students are putting themselves as dealers up for sale. They don't have to promote it on a large scale, they can just promote it to five, 10, 15 people, people in their groups, and keep it there. So it's very hard to detect.
So, when they vape, though, I'm surprised to hear you say it's in the school. I mean, we all ran into the bathrooms and, you know, there was a cloud in, in every bathroom back then. This was a long time ago, Superintendent. But now, but the vaping still lets off a puff. I, you're like, when you're walking and somebody ahead of you is doing it, you see a quick puff. So I'm surprised that it's...
Not, not as, with a lot of these, not as big as, I think maybe you see maybe driving in a car, and you see...
Yeah.
Come out a window. Not, I would say, very, very minimal puff. It's more of a smell that you'll get from a lot of these different products. They also, like I said, with the drawstrings on the hoodies, they can take a whack out of it, they just pull the hoodie, they blow whatever they have, you know, in their mouth into the hoodie, and you're not going to, you're not going to smell it. You know, it's not, back in the day, maybe when you came home and mom and dad smelled your breath to see if you had any, any liquor on there. It's...
We were smart enough to play sports, so we didn't get home until 5:00.
Absolutely.
So, you, you actually taught me something tonight, though, the yoga pants. I keep losing my phone, I'm going to put an elastic around it, but I think I'm going to get pulled over now. So, I, I guess I'm, I'm a little surprised that in the schools, that they're so gutsy that they're dealing in the schools, and what are we doing when you, so you're right, you, you, I live on Cabot Road. I know when, when there's a cluster, there's trouble. So people have put fences up to stop clusters. So what do we do to those students?
Well, that, well, that's, that's where being visible for us is, is to know that we're in those areas that they would typically make their deals with. We also, we have good communication with a lot of students. We do get a lot of information from a lot of students, and that gets out. And we're not secretive about it. If I find out that there's a student who, you know, may be involved, you know, we pull that student in immediately. Word travels fast.
Good. That's the best way. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and I say you're a great person, because anybody who can coach their son has got to be a good person.
You may think differently.
Well, he's a star, so.
Thank you, Steve, for the information. And part of education is awareness. And I think that the purpose of tonight's presentation is to help bring more awareness in the community of, one, it is an epidemic, how widespread it is, not just in the streets, but in the school, the schoolyards, how easy it is to get whatever product it is the kids want to get. Again, we can't control the kids, it's the parents' responsibility, but they have to be aware of it. But we do have an opportunity to control that small piece where adults are selling the product illegally to minors. And I think that's something that I would think would be very easy to end. In Mark's presentation, if I may, you showed some fines, 100, 300, et cetera, but I understand the new fine structure is 1,000 to 3,000. Would somebody that had been fined previously, before the new law, state law, if they were caught again, would they be fined under the old fine structure, or would that new fine structure as a second violation go into effect?
Sure. So, at this time, I can't actually give you a definitive answer to that. The Board of Health needs to have a little more discussion on that, and we're definitely going to need to consult technical...
And that's why, that's why I bring it up, because it is a question, I'm sure there's no answer at the moment, but maybe just something to consider. So, if the, if it happens, you have a response and know how to handle it.
Yes.
To follow up, do we have any first offenses on record?
Under the new law?
No, under the old.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so for 2019, we had, I think it was four first offenses, and then two subsequent.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Danvers Cares, Board of Health, Police Department, for coming tonight, making the presentation to help bring more awareness to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
We'll take a five-minute break.
Beautiful.
We will now review the February 10th, 2020 Special Town Meeting Warrant. I was speaking to somebody today about the new year, and I said, no, it's a new decade. He says, yep, we're back to the whirring twenties. I know how old he was, but... says, yep, we're back to the whirring 20s. I know how old he was, but the new whirring 20s, there we go. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You have with you tonight, I hope, copies of the warrant booklet that was put together in anticipation of our February 10th town meeting. It arrived bound. Typically, you get it in draft form. I just, as was noted in an email, if there are substantive changes that we need to make to this, either in terms of explanation or anything else, we're prepared to reprint copies and get those distributed. If there are not substantive changes, we do have probably follow-up mailing. The Finance Committee recommendations, of course, will need to be mailed after next week. We'll have the annual town reports going out to town meeting members as well, and any supplemental information.
To that point, speaking with the moderator, she felt that we need to reserve the warrant.
Sure.
Okay.
So, as I said, typically, this comes out stapled instead of bound.
Right.
We got it out for the holidays. So, we can, we can very easily, we're prepared to reissue this, which frankly would allow us to incorporate some additional documents, including the memorandum that you received tonight. There are copies up front if folks would like to grab one. These are some questions that were posed by the selectmen after the warrants were prepared. So, we provided written responses to those questions. And then, as of today, there were two topics that were, that were coming up. So, the Director of Land Use-
Would you give me one, please?
I believe you.
Thanks.
Please. You should all have one.
I did not get a copy of the warrant.
Oh, the-
Of the bound warrant?
Thank you.
I didn't realize that. Thank you.
They were mailed. You didn't-
Couple weeks ago, I came in and mailed.
Sorry.
So, this was the response to the email?
This was the response to-
Okay, I did have that. Thank you.
So, we have six, there are six articles in the draft of the warrant for the February town meeting. Five of them, we would like to see go before the town meeting.
Okay.
Oh, wait a second.
Go ahead.
Sorry. The sixth item, which is the budget amendments, is unnecessary. So, when we're at the conclusion tonight, we can simply vote that one down. Although, again, this is the draft, so we don't need to move it forward. So, I think what I'd propose we do is simply start with number one and walk through. There are some fairly straightforward ones at the beginning of the warrant. Unpaid bills, these are bills that either the invoices were not received, or they were submitted incorrectly prior to the July 15th deadline for payments to be made for the current year. So, we had two bills that we received after the July 15th deadline totaling $488. These will require a nine-tenths vote by town meeting to pay. That's, that's what the law says when, when an unpaid bill transfers into the next year. So, two bills, one had to do with some hood cleaning at the senior center. The contractor we used does 99.9% of their work doing hoods at the schools. So, the invoice was being circulated among the schools, and by the time it landed in our, in the appropriate department, it was too late to pay for the current year. So, that's why it's here. The other one is a $35 expense from Endicott Park. It was done toward the end of the fiscal year. We, we were asking for the invoice, didn't get it, and so it's here. So, we will, we will spend more than $488 in staff time between now and February 10th getting this approved. But the law requires that the town meeting take action on these two invoices. So, I would be looking for support to-
Will we accept?
Move these on to the Finance Committee.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Item number two, budget transfers. As we've discussed, we, we did a reorganization in the HR department this year with the resignation of our HR Director. The Assistant Town Manager took on the high-level duties that, that the, her predecessor had, had assumed, and that allowed us to reorganize the two positions that were funded in that department. The, the administrative position became an HR Assistant, and the director position became an HR Generalist. Because the director had been paid out of the department head's budget, we need to do a mid-year transfer to pay those positions for the duration of the current fiscal year. And this is something that will get corrected as we're putting together the FY '21 budget.
May I make a motion? We accept Article II's recommendation?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? None. Thank you.
Article three is part of the fiscal year 19 closeout of the state budget, which, for those keeping track of these things, this is the second consecutive year that Massachusetts was last in the nation to close its, its state budget. There were an additional $20 million included to fund Chapter 90. And so, this art, this article would allow for those $89,000 and change that will come to Danvers through this formula to be spent as part of the spring pavement program.
Will we accept? Second.
Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? None. Thank you.
Now, we'll pivot from the straightforward ones and get to the more substantive items. We have the two articles that we'll talk about next. One, the one we'll start with, Article Number Four, which is, which is a land swap between the town and the Danvers Historical Society. This was first approved, this was originally approved by town meeting in 1986. For, for a variety of reasons, this transfer was never completed. Subsequent to that vote, Chapter, I'm sorry, Chapter 30B and Article 97 presented additional requirements, meaning that if, if the town wished to reaffirm this decision, we would have to submit home rule petitions to the state legislature seeking, legislature seeking relief under Article 97 to be allowed to transfer the property, and under Chapter 30B to be able to do so without a formal procurement process. And that's because Chapter 30P requires, except for in extenuating circumstances, when, when a town wants to dispossess of a piece of property, you have to go through a bid process unless, in this case, there's a very unique circumstance where the, the Historical Society and the town essentially share that, the park, and it wouldn't make sense to, to put this parcel through a public procurement process. So, there's a mechanism whereby the town can petition the state to allow that transfer to happen. So, appraisals were done to ensure that like, like value was being exchanged, and the state has recommended, and, and we certainly agree, and the, and the warrant draft includes language that would indeed restrict those parcels upon transfer to ensure that they remain in the state that they were intended to be in when the properties were purchased in the mid-1960s. This was a, this was a project Susan Fletcher was working on prior to her retirement. Aaron, Henry and his staff have been intimately involved in this, and I think either he or I would be happy to try and, try to answer any questions that you have on this particular item.
Any questions for members of the board to speak up?
The town still retains the ownership of Ingersoll Street itself, all the way around.
Do you want to speak to that, Aaron?
The way was discontinued. I can't remember the year, but, so, Butters own it to the center line. So, where we own both sides of that portion of it until you get to right around the, where Glen Magnus starts. But we will control most of Ingersoll on both sides.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Anything else? That's it? That's the will of the board?
Will we accept as presented? Second.
Discussion? None. Hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. opposed? None. Thank you. That was easy.
Okay. Article five is the, the character-based zoning in the downtown. This is what you have in your hands. Can also be found online, and it represents 18 months of work by the planning board. I'll note, Bill Prentice here, Chair of the Planning Board. They, they were tasked by this board a year ago to not only come up with rezoning ideas for High Street of, in the I-1 district, but to expand that to include the C-1, C-1A districts. They've, they've held more than a dozen public hearings and, and sitewalks and workshops over the past year, not to mention hundreds of conversations that Aaron's staff has had with property owners and Butters and interested residents, and Rich Maloney as well, from the, from the building department, engaging and thinking through what's here tonight. This, what's here tonight is a continuation of a process that was started back in 2006. It builds on the successful effort in 2017, when, when special town meeting approved rezoning of the upper end of the square, changing it from industrial into a mixed-use with, with appropriate density and, and attractive design guidelines. And, and I think frankly, a more holistic view of what the downtown can be in the, you know, 10 years, 20 years, 30 years to come. Just a little context, much of the current zoning in Danvers was adopted in the decades after World War II. Current uses in these districts we're talking about include heavy manufacturing, boat storage, wholesaling, fuel storage. We're not seeing applications for uses like these, but I think they would be treated as by right if somebody were to step forward and try to do some of those things. And I think everyone that has been engaged in this process agrees that that's not what we want to see in our downtown. And I think an important point, you know, for a community our size, that's either, you know, we're, we're fully developed. We're, we're either built or protected. Most of our 13 square miles is, is either protected as open space or already developed. So, these, you know, these districts represent kind of a one-time opportunity to set the table for the next several business cycles, to see what redevelopment or reinvestment is going to look like. I think what's clear in these documents is that at the heart of this opportunity is a, is, is the demand being voiced by both individuals in the market for housing opportunities within walking distance of food and services and retail and things of that nature. And under the current zoning, that's only, you know, achievable through findings and variances before the ZBA, which is not an ideal way to plan for your downtown. Aaron and I were looking today, since 2010, roughly, we've had 80 units either built or proposed or under construction on Cherry Street, Holton Street, Maple Street, that have mixed-use or residential elements that would have been, that would be subject to the approval process that's laid out in these documents now, under this character-based zoning proposal. We have the option of doing nothing. If that, if, if we do nothing, then the type of projects that we've seen built in, in previous years will continue to be proposed. But, but I think everybody agrees that puts the ZBA in the unfair position of having to do the work of the planning board and the town meeting when, when evaluating these projects. And it, it results in projects that are case by case, meaning that they're out of context, approved in isolation, and the results vary. And we've seen that when we look at the projects over the last 10 years. The densities vary, the design, the look and feel varies, and we don't have the predictability that, that modern zoning can, can afford. You know, I think the, this proposal, in my view, seems to strike a good balance between density, affordability, civic space, streetscape, vibrant, mixed-use spaces. I think everybody understands that some of the ground-level issues like traffic and parking and water use and infrastructure demand will have to continue to be managed closely moving forward. But I think I would, I would commend the planning board, planning staff and the consultant they work with that, from, from 30,000 feet, I think this proposal is a giant step in the right direction, which isn't to say that there aren't issues that we're going to have to manage as we move forward. So, I wanted to set the table with that. I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Henry and let him present if he'd like, or we simply can start taking questions on the, on the materials that we're prepared for tonight. Okay?
Do we have questions from the board?
On?
On, on whole zoning?
The whole thing?
Sure, the whole thing, because when it comes right down to it, and I want to thank first the planning board and the planning department for all the work that you've done for this, to bring this character-based zoning to us. But my feeling as a selectman, we want to ensure that it's a benefit to the community, and that the citizens are not unduly harmed by issues that will be a result of this zoning. And Town Manager just mentioned some of them. And bringing it up again, these issues that will come about while they're not zoning, they need to be enforced. And our chief enforcement officer has obviously taken notes, so that I don't have to repeat all these issues. But I do have some concerns about what the downtown and High Street will look like in 20 to 30 years, and what will people be saying about, what was that Board of Selectmen thinking of when they pass this zoning bylaw from a result of unintended consequences? So, pretty much that's where my mindset is. As Mr. Trash said to me early, he's not going to question cornices and facades and things of that nature. You've done that. But I see issues coming out of this zoning in the future, where we're going to need to have DTAC get involved and other enforcement folks to maintain a quality of life that is not unduly hard on the citizens. So, I won't go into specifics, but if you'd go to the podium and answer questions from the members of the board, and if you feel that you need to make any presentation that is more beneficial, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Bennett, I couldn't agree with you more. And I think that's part of what we're trying to do here. Again, I mean, I, Steve knows I've been in his office panicking about a comma here, or, you know, the wrong citation there. But I think at, at that high level, all of those issues that you just raised are happening now in the current permitting scheme. And I think what we're trying to do is get in front of this by creating a playbook that provides consistent outcomes, predictable outcomes, not only for property owners, but for Butters to those projects, because those consequences are happening with the 80-odd units that Steve mentioned. At least, this provides us with a framework to have that conversation. And again, we've strengthened some of those elements around parking, managing your parking, and how that relates to traffic and congestion downtown, to try to get in front of that. Now, I wish I could sit here and stand here and tell you that this is perfect. We're batting 1,000. That's probably not the case. But that being said, I think that what we've done is tried to strengthen those areas so that we can minimize those sorts of externalities that you get with development. And I, and I, you know, we will have to focus harder on those types of projects. And again, you've seen the area, a lot of mixed-use redevelopment happening in eastern Massachusetts right now. It's, it's very hot. It's, it's a desirable marketplace to be in. And it's going to cause us to have to, we have to do better at the staff level, and we're going to have to require more of our boards and committees that regulate these developments to make sure that we really are, I've said this to Steve a number of times, good development checks multiple boxes. It doesn't just meet the needs of the proposer. Development, I should say, zoning sets up a public-private partnership, where the community endows properties with rights, and we expect the private market, the private sector, to help us bring those goals and objectives to fruition. And so, we, we need to make sure that these developments coming through the pipeline, if we're lucky enough to get this through town meeting, is doing that. And I think we've set out a framework, building off of the success of the 2017 overlay, to put us in a good position to do that. There will be externalities, and there will be a little, you know, we'll, we'll hit a hiccup where we wish we had said X plus one instead of X minus one. But I think as Mr. Bartha has said, we're very comfortable with the product. We think we have a great state-of-the-art product for the town, and we really think it's what we need to be doing going forward into this 21st century.
Thank you. David, did you get all your questions answered on this? Do we have any others?
Yeah, I'd like to respond to some of this. May I, Dan?
Yes.
First of all, every time that Aaron says mixed-use, I think of this, the Prince Spaghetti ad. Anthony is down on the street, and he's yelling upstairs to his mother who's cooking above the store. And it always appealed to me as like, that kind of use, I just, and I like it. And I like the way it came out with, at Daniella's. And I had the opportunity to meet with Aaron for a couple of hours last week, and with Steve and Aaron, I don't know, a couple of hours or some, some time today. And I have gone over this and over this and over this. And as far as a visionary plan for what is good for the town, and for the downtown district, I think it is a splendid, absolutely splendid piece of work. And all of the philosophical projections, hopes, dreams that went into this, I think is great. I suspect that we're going to have a lot of citizen complaint input and criticism with the assertion that any rezoning we do here now will increase the already very difficult traffic on Route 62 and 35. I don't happen to think that's going to happen, but I anticipate that people are going to bring that up and say anything that is a change is going to make the traffic worse. Well, I don't believe that. I think, I think change can often make things better. My continuing concern, and I think it's going to be a big concern with the town meeting members, is the minimal, the, the required off-street parking per dwelling unit. And as far as I can understand our proposal- And as far as I can understand our proposal, one-bedroom units that happened to be developed here will, would have one and a half parking spaces per unit. And there are all kinds of alternatives, thoughts, hopes, dreams, and projections based upon real-life experience of other people in other towns and our consultants. But I'm still not convinced that a one and a half parking space minimum is enough and that it will be something that can go forward successfully to the finance committee and the town meeting. But one of the things that appeals most to me from this is utilization of our downtown lands in creative ways without involving the zoning board of appeals as essentially becoming the town meeting for rezoning and zoning of these very precious parcels. I have been critical from time to time of the way that the, our community has permitted the use of the variance power under the zoning act to create all kinds of modifications and new uses that are otherwise not permitted by the existing zoning. And as an old zoner and an old, everybody knows how old I am, and that I had been doing zoning, land use, and teaching it for years and years and years, and I go by the book, and in the last five or 10 years, much of what has happened in our multifamily use and reuse of property, including Locust Street, including Pond Street and Holton, and up at Cherry Street and Maple, the utilization by the zoning board of the zoning power to effectively be the town meeting substitute for zoning, it troubles me terribly. I think that this, while looking at the total product, one could say, gee, that's very complicated. Can anybody ever understand that? Yeah, you read it one or two or three times, then you work on an actual project, and then you come to understand by doing it. It's like doing your first income tax return. Looks scary, but the 10th one is nowhere near as scary as the first one. So I think this is a magnificent piece of work. I don't feel that the one and a half spaces minimum for the one-bedroom unit, I don't think it is enough. I think that there may be problems at the finance committee and town meeting, but I also think that the explanations that the planning department and the planning board have presented as far as countering my concerns, I'm still evaluating. I have not made up my mind, and I will be very careful with it because I think the overall proposal is of such high quality and value to this town now. And I think that what is proposed here is going to be built out over the course of 5, 10, 15, or 20 years. It isn't like all of a sudden what is proposed here is going to happen tomorrow or the next day, because it simply isn't. But it is a, it is a program for reasonable use of land properly designed with workable criteria. And so I say kudos to the planning board and to the planning department, and your minimal parking for one-bedrooms frightens me. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Bill, comments?
Thank you. I didn't get a chance to look at the entire document, 80, 100, 80 pages or whatever. I did see the summaries, but I've been following this for quite a while, and I haven't been doing zoning quite as long as David and quite to the extent he has, but we'll come close. I have, I was, there was three things that I was hoping we were able to, would be able to address with this rezoning down here. Two of them are problems that I hear from almost everybody that talks about it, traffic and parking. The third element, which is, and the affordable housing, which you've recommended here, was great, except that I was looking and hoping that we were going to have one-bedroom apartments predominantly in a lot of these units over the square, and studio apartments for the entry-level people, the young kids coming out of college that need to live in a very smaller area, can live in a smaller area for the time being, or older people like myself who may want to downsize in a big way and not have the responsibility of extra space. We have certainly a facility down on Hunt Street, no, no, not Hunt, Porter Street, that has much smaller units for the elderly down there. It's a private organization, but they're filled up all the time. Most of the people that have talked to me are looking for these smaller units to live if they want to live in a downtown area. Surprisingly, except for Diane, I haven't had anyone come to me raving about the fact that they want to have this even done downtown. The people, the opposition is just unbelievable to the dense trafficking. They see what happens over on Rantoul Street in Beverly. Granted, that's five stories, much more dense. It's horrendous. You go up 114 in North Andover or Middleton and see what's being built along those structures in what was previously rural communities, and you've got five-story structures up there, condominiums, just dominating the environment. We look at what happened at the Endicott Green, is it, on One South where the Watson Farm was, to the 40B? And that's the worst-case scenario that we could have shoved right to us. We couldn't do much about it if we didn't have that 10%. And people don't realize how big those buildings are. They're bigger than what we're proposing down here down in the square. They're five stories high down up there, so tremendous density. I just read a real scary article today in the Salem News, I guess it was, and Peabody, where the developer who was denied relatively dense development has come in with a plan for King Street where the old J.B. Thomas Hospital was, for 300 and some odd units in a two-acre parcel. It seems absurd.
I think it was 130.
Was it 130?
130.
But it's an unbelievable amount of density for a very small parcel. And, you know, who knows what's going to be coming out of the minds of some of these developers if they ever have the opportunity. But I just don't think we've addressed enough small units in this area. I agree with David 100% that at 1.5 spaces does not work, and we have an excellent example of that in the Daniella's project in Tapleyville. If it was not for the generosity of the Lee family, they would never be able to accommodate that building and its uses. They're already having a major conflict with the...
They're not having the conflict because of the residential element of that property. There are...
It's the commercial element. They haven't got enough parking for the restaurant and the store across the way. McKinnons has had a major problem with it.
Right, but I mean, the conversation traditionally has been about the unit sizes. That one has six units, 12 parking spaces dedicated for the residential.
I didn't say that it was that. The problem down there is that the total use for the site, as prescribed or as done in the zoning, it just doesn't work. There's too much parking. There's not enough parking there for the people that use the space, the restaurant especially, from 4:00 in the afternoon until the evening. There was a proposal at one point in time to increase the density over where pizza places in that same area. That would be ridiculous because the space is already being used for parking. If you go down there now and see the red shed this afternoon, every single space around that building, there was a car parked there. I don't know what the fire code is, but you could not get at that building because there's cars all around, all up and down with the employees that work there.
That applicant came before the planning board and twice, two years ago, and couldn't move forward because they weren't able to park their proposal. And I appreciate the point, Mr. Clark. I think that one, in a weird way, that's when, that's a good problem to have in that that business is successful and it's bringing people into us, it's pumping meal tax into the tax base. It's exactly what we wanted. The alternative was, I remember the alternative because my daughter used to take gymnastics there.
Oh, yeah.
So, and that's the, that's, again, I think to hearken back to the, you know, the 30,000-foot view, it's this kind of, we've got a success, we want a successful downtown, and some of that comes with some issues. We think we've got this calibrated right. I'd rather have the problem of Daniella's than the alternative that we had for a number of years. And I think we have an opportunity here to try to correct some of those issues. I think, like I said, I think the, this zoning proposal talks about parking and transportation in a way that the code does not talk about it today. And again, it's about leveraging those developments to make sure that, more than just making sure that this and this myopic view of that site works. We need to make sure that that site interacts well with its neighbors, its abutters, and I believe we have the framework in here to do that. Now, again, whether or not we execute that, only time will tell.
Well, there's a couple of other points that I would like to make, Aaron, if I could, before I stop. And I was only using those examples in Tapleyville. There's four examples in that parcel that we rezoned down there. The other one is the building that was already rebuilt by the Sears family, and I believe there's a nonprofit in there, and that particular nonprofit had a need for way more parking than the site allowed. The former town manager gave them half of our substation site that we had there for additional parking, and it helped to mitigate it, but it's still a problem. Those four examples in that space that was bounded by the rail trail and Pine and Holton Street really show what could happen to the downtown, downtown square area if, in fact, the Board of Appeals relents, as David might have mentioned earlier, alluded to. I don't trust the Board of Appeals right now because I've seen what's happened on Cherry Street, I've seen what's happened on Tapleyville, and it just gets too congested. Now, if we don't have a mechanism to build a parking garage to take care of the essential extra parking for downtown square, I don't know how that's going to work. I can see us, you know, we went out of our way to get the Hobart Street parking lot there to help accommodate some of this extra, and I hope that that's going to be able to fulfill its role. But the downtown area from Hobart Street down to Park Street is just so dense, and there's almost an impossibility to cobble things together. We've had one instance in my lifetime of a development down there where they've even made an attempt to get onsite parking, and that was the atrium. Now, I don't know what percentage of the people that use the atrium are parking in those spaces underneath that. It isn't that much. And when it was fully occupied, they couldn't, they didn't have enough space to do it. But that's an answer that we're going to look at somehow, and I don't know what's in that longer document. I hope there's a provision in there to allow underground parking, to encourage it, to encourage, if that fund's going to be there to mitigate the parking problem, that the money that's going to go into that is going to be sufficient to build a parking garage if you want this kind of density. Now, all this aside, we're talking about spewing out all this traffic onto that main artery that already is backed up into the square on a regular basis because of the traffic lights and because of the intersection and the very poor design down on, which isn't our problem, that's the state's problem, I agree. But on a regular basis, that traffic is backed up into the square trying to get through 128 down by, 128 and High Street. So we've got a real dense area. And I know that one of the things also, you take a look at our town, we, I know we look at Somerville as being the most dense community, I think even in America, but we're 13 square miles, and we've got about 28,000 people in here, but we're not 13 square miles because you take away a square mile for the reservoir, and you take away a square mile for Route 95 or more. So we're down to about 11 acres, and we've got 28,000 people on 11 acres, 11 square miles. That is really, really dense, and I don't know how much more we can take. I personally have two personal friends who've literally moved out of this town this year and gone to Maine, and their big comment is traffic. They come back and they say, oh, yeah, I was sitting in my living room, 20 cars went by all day. And they lived on a street that's right off Route 62. We've got a problem with traffic. There's no way to accommodate it. We've got a bunch of cow paths that were linked together from colonial days, and we're trying to run it. It isn't like going out in Vegas and designing a whole new community out there and be able to have five and six wide-lane highways. We don't have the room. Granted, High Street is one of the few streets in town that is relatively wide from the square down to 128, but that's going to be pretty dense when this is developed. And I've got to withhold my wholehearted support. I realize there's an awful lot of work in this, and you've got almost 100 pages of explanation and limitations to the owners, and this is where we should be developing. But how much we can develop in there and how much the town can absorb is a big question. And I'm not even going to address the water situation to it, okay? That's not, that's, it's traffic, parking, and affordability of housing units that are going to be developed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I address just a couple of the points, Mr. Clark? Just for clarification for folks watching, you referenced Rantoul Street. That's come up at every public meeting that the planning board and planning board have. I just want to make clear, this zoning specifically would prohibit anything like that. I don't want to mislead folks to think that this would result in that. From setting back second floors to height limitations to density limitations, this proposal is actually less dense than what was approved in December of 2017 by our town meeting. Endicott Green is a 40B project. I'm not sure that's a good comp for this. I want to respond to the note about being disappointed with zoning board of appeals decisions. I mean, part of the reason we're tackling this and part of the reason this board asked for the planning board to do this is that we have zoning that's now 60 years old, and the ZBA is finding itself.
74 years old.
74 years old.
Same age I am.
And they are being put in the position of having to make these decisions that belong to this board and the town meeting and the planning board. The issues that your friends are raising in terms of traffic and parking are real. We know from the study we did several years ago, we have 1,700 parking spaces, public and private, in our town. It's...
Please don't even get into that traffic study. That's the biggest piece of crap we have.
But it was completed, and we, the counts are accurate. And so we, you know, we've spent a lot of time looking at and thinking about the parking. We understand that is always going to be an issue. But I, my concern, I guess, in hearing the response is that this is an attempt to get the framework in place, and the ground-level issues shouldn't prevent the needed improvements from moving forward. The problems aren't going away, but they're also not going to be solved by doing nothing. And I just wanted to sort of point that out.
Well said, Bill.
Well, you know, you bring up the coefficients of the parking study. It's a very naive assumption that people are going to share property that they're paying big money for to some other person who's maybe a budding user. And I'd use the example of Daniella's and McKinnon's. McKinnon's paid big money for their property. They don't want someone else parking in their parking lot, which they need to conduct their business. And down in the square, the same way. I know that Brothers happens to own, I think, seven parking spaces behind their building there that they purchased when they bought that whole block. That's their units. Those are their units, and they have the right to limit who parks there. And they have a difficult time keeping just their customers in those spots right there because our municipal lot is contiguous to it, and most people don't realize that it's two different lots. But we're just going to make a real aggressive, proactive move to accommodate and provide parking if we're going to have this denser development. Salem seems to have answered that question with some of their parking garages, and we have areas that we probably could address it as well, on Park Street, on Cottage Avenue. And I think we really have to look at that as one of the answers to the density of parking if you're going to go ahead with this density of development in the town square.
And I don't mean to keep picking on you, but...
That's all right.
Using Daniella's as the example, that's something Selectman Mills and Aaron and I discussed the other days. If Daniella's and McKinnon's were located inside these target areas and the Daniella's proposal was being made today, there are tools and mechanisms in here whereby Daniella's would be incentivized and encouraged to go speak to McKinnon's about some sort of arrangement at the back end of that lot. But because it was done, you know, through a ZBA finding or a variance, I'm not sure which, that opportunity, the tool didn't exist, whereas the tool now exists to try to be creative in some of these problems.
And it's rare to see the cooperation that Barry Tavern's been able to finally extrapolate out of the People's Bank, which for a long time was objecting to anyone using anything down there. Here's an example of a very vibrant restaurant that has no parking, nothing, not even a place for their dumpster. And they've had to work hard and aggressively to get an agreement with their budding commercial landowner to be able to function where they are. And they paid big money for that building, over $1 million for that building, so...
And we can't force those arrangements, but we can try to facilitate those arrangements.
Thank you.
Okay, Bill.
And Aaron, I was given directive not to tear you apart by one of our fellow board members.
No, and I've said all along, I mean, I appreciate...
You know I respect you dramatically.
Oh, yeah, no, and I appreciate all the conversations we've had over...
How many years?
Over many years. And I think that's what makes these proposals better, is that candid back and forth that we've been able to have in some candid meetings. And to be fair, you know, I think what we're trying to do, as Steve said, is we need to put the tools in there. Now, will everybody take advantage of all of the opportunities that we're trying to? Who knows? But if we don't change it up, we're doing nothing, and we're going to keep bumping along, and all of the problems that you've discussed will just be kind of dealt with as projects come up. I think what we're trying to do here is create, you know, a, some sort of comprehensive view such that we're not just doing these in little one-off developments, that we have a bigger vision for the area, and that, again, we can try to leverage these developments to help us realize those things. We talk about signage and wayfinding. We need to do a better job to increase the utilization of the assets we have. Surface parking, parking in general is an economic development... we have. Surface parking, parking in general is an economic development, you know, it is a loss leader for both landowners and municipalities. We have a lot of underutilized parking lots. This proposal creates the opportunity for landowners to approach those who have parking in a fundamentally different way and to hopefully leverage those opportunities. So, I hear you. I couldn't, I mean, again, I'll tell you, I'm not a parking nini. It's gotten worse downtown for a lot of reasons. I'm not sure. It's these 80 units across these developments that have happened over the last decade. I think it's more external factors that have led to the congestion downtown. But we've got to find a way to leverage development to help us attack it. And I'm hoping this proposal does that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Diane?
Well, this is something that I really have always wanted. I have been working on it, and I want to thank the Planning Board. We went to them after the first phase and said, combine two and three. I really want to thank you for doing that. It took a long time, and I'm sure you're glad you're now not going to start Phase Three, that you got it done. We've handed you a few projects over the last 10 years, and I think you need a little break, so. But I think you did a great job on this. I am approached by people as this was going forward over the last three to five years, from retirement professionals. I'm getting there. I'm one of them. I really would love to live downtown. It didn't get done fast enough for me. We want to walk. The professionals I talked to are bankers and railtors and corporate people who just, you know, the rail trail's there. There's restaurants, there's banking, there's shopping. I remember as a kid, you'd go downtown. It wasn't parking front of Supremes, run into Supremes, run out. You went downtown, and you went to Almies, you went to Woolworths, you went to the liquor store. Well, I didn't go. My father went. And we went to the fish market, and we did all of our errands, and then you went home. You went to the corner store to get bread and milk. Remember when you used to do that? So, that's what the downtown was, and I think a lot of people want to get back to that. When I travel, I always stay two things. Has to be near the ocean, has to be walking distance to downtown. That's what most professionals, we're very lucky to be healthy professionals retiring. Something that, another thing is, we've talked about young people not being able to stay in Danvis. Well, actually, I've been a little surprised lately at how many young people are coming back to Danvis. And I don't know if that's in your statistics, but as I talk to people, they're coming back. And so, having this downtown to be that first place they buy or whatever. Aaron, I'm going to make you correct me here, but I met with David and Aaron, and Aaron brought something up that I wasn't aware of, and that is that the Planning Department has negotiated a change in our bus service, which I don't think a lot of people know. We now have a bus going from downtown to the Salem train station. That's huge. Young people don't all have cars, and young professionals, they don't really want cars anymore. They can't afford, they don't want to pay the car payments, they don't want the insurance. So, I think that's a big plus for young people who are working in Boston, going to school in Boston, whatever. And I hope we get that message out that this isn't just the zoning. We've gotten liquor licenses, we've changed our buses, we've moved the bus, and we have a rail trail, and we're extending the rail trail. Biking, I watch people bike to the Cummings Center. It's very popular now. And we are working on making biking more friendly in Danvis. So, this isn't just about overdue in downtown. It's about new quali, the quality of life for what people want now, which is, we are a walking people, we are healthier, and we just want to, you know, be able to live a more comfortable. I don't want to take care of a pool or a yacht or anything like that. I just want to be able to walk out to dinner. So, I think that's something that this addresses. So, it's not just about people who need a one-bedroom or whatever. It's about people like me who want a two-bedroom, retire comfortably, and relax. And I thank the Planning Board for addressing all of that, including bringing in the 40R, which I'll get to. The traffic. So, traffic, traffic is not going away. This isn't going to solve it. I don't think it's going to change it. I'm hoping that it makes people all go downtown and actually be sociable. I think the traffic study did a great job. Hobart Street is a good example of what that traffic study could do. And that is, don't knock how many spots it said that are available. Read the thing that shows how we can make that more useful in downtown. We found out that we do not do a good job of helping people to get to these parking spaces and walk into downtown. We need to address that. Signage isn't enough. We need to do better at that. We need the businesses, as the developers come in, to, we learn that connectivity behind the buildings is more appropriate than parking out front. We learned that through this traffic study. And Hobart Street was, a church and a fish store helped us to get that. Well, businesses are very generous in Danvis. They all want to be successful, too. If there's a way they can get more people into their place, I'm sure we can work with them. The town manager has said that they want to work with these businesses. And I have seen that we do work with these businesses. We don't say, nope, we can't touch them, they're the business. We only do the taxpayers. Well, they're taxpayers, too, and we need to make them, the more money they make, the happier they are, the longer they stay, the better they will produce an aesthetic-type building that will make our downtown beautiful. Planning Board, I've been to their meetings, I went to the workshops, not all of them, and I loved when they disagreed because they really worked through some issues of parking, of the setbacks. And one of the things that, you know, people don't realize is, it's not just tall buildings. You're right, Rantoul Street's straight up. They wanted, so, they talked about sunlight coming through. They talked about wind. They talked, it was a lot that went into how it was designed. And yes, I hope they, we have rooftop bars. I'm one of those crazy people, but people being happy downtown is not a bad thing. So, if we get it, great. If we don't, I'm not going to cry over it. But again, you know, it's someplace that I really wanted to live. My colleague brought up the JB Hospital, reading that we all did this morning, and, you know, again, to the Planning Board, the Planning Department, great job of keeping us above 10%. Great job of bringing that in to this overlay with the 40R. PBD, that development, they brought many things there. I happen to know somebody that lives up there. And the neighbors all complained, nope, 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 nope. Nobody warned them that they were under 10%. And now, I feel really bad because they do not have, really, as we all know, it's very hard to stop 40B, very hard. You don't really have, say, it's a state thing. So, now they're getting something worse than what was originally planned. We don't want that. We're a 10-point something. I
Agreed.
Yeah, we're not, we're not, but we're over, and thank you for keeping us there. It's something that they have to pay attention to, we have to pay attention to, Aaron better pay attention to. So, I really think that you're not looking at this for all that it does for Danvis. You know, growing up, Danvis was very sociable, and now we want everybody to drive to just one spot and take off. That was the thing I missed most about Little League. Man, you'd get out of the park, and you'd park your car, and you'd be watching a game, and it was three hours after the game before you left because there were so many people you'd seen. It was a Saturday. We need that back in this town. And my last thing, because I'm sure you're sick of hearing me say this because I've been doing the same thing over and over. By the way, I've talked to businesses downtown, and they really need something. They're begging for something down there. To my town meeting members, it's my last town meeting, so I can get away with this. Don't wait till you get to the floor. Don't open the book when you get there. This is really big. I don't care if you call the town manager, call Ann, call Aaron, call me, if you have a question, if you have a complaint. I have not heard from anybody complaining about this. But please don't wait and learn about the downtown overlay at 7:00 on February 10th. Please, don't do that. Go to DCAT, re-watch the production that I believe you're going to put on for FinCom. You're going to put on a full slide?
Yeah, we have a full presentation.
Great. On January 14th at 7:00 PM, turn on your TVs or watch it on DCAT. There's a lot that went into this. There's a lot of questions that went into this. But if you have a question, call the town manager, call Ann, call Aaron, call me. I don't care who you call, but please call before February 10th or on the floor, February 10th.
Diane, if I may, there is a meeting for town meeting members. When is that, Mr. Bartha?
February 1st in this room.
February 1st, all town meetings Saturday morning.
Okay. You know, Mr. Chairman, something we've always talked about is the fact that the clerk can't email our town meeting members because not everybody has an email address, and that would be against that. But they all have a phone. And can we put in the reverse call just to town meeting members? Do we have that ability? Because letters aren't working, and we can't email them. Can we do that?
For the meeting that we're planning in two weeks, we're going to stick with personal letters being mailed out to invite folks to the
It's not working.
We may. I don't know, short of going through what Ann Freitas describes as the nosy book and manually entering all the numbers, I'm not sure
Okay.
what the technology is on that. But
But they're all
We will be sending letters out personally, inviting all town meeting members to come in, have a pastry and a cup of coffee
It's very upsetting.
And talk to us about zoning.
It's a little upsetting.
But I realize it's upsetting.
Can't steal all the donuts this time.
It's all right.
Diane, are you all set? Anything else?
Nope.
Hold on, God.
Nope.
All set?
I just, I truly support this. I think the Planning Board did a hell of a job. I think it was a lot of work. I think the workshops were amazing. I just wish instead of people just complaining that they showed up at these things and voiced it to the people who can actually address their questions.
We did a little pop-up survey at the tree lighting. I didn't, I apologize, I didn't see any of you there. We were freezing. Georgia from the Planning Department and I were there, serving hot cocoa. I think we ran out around 4:30-ish, and we're numb, so we disappeared. But we probably had contact with around 100 individuals running by on their way to the tree lighting. Over half of them said they had heard about the zoning work. And for the most part, again, parking in traffic is certainly a concern, but the response we got from just the average person on the street walking by, and I think I only met one town meeting member that day, it was Mr. Tingle. Other than that, it was all fresh faces. And I was, we were shocked at the positive, you know, I say overwhelmingly positive. Again, I don't want to minimize that parking and traffic were issues, but everyone there, over half of them had said they had heard about it, and most of them were very supportive of the concept. So, that was a
That's who I talked to.
kind of nice affirmation for us and the process that the Planning Board has been going through over the last 18 months.
Well, thank you to the Planning Board and Aaron, and your department.
Okay. All set? Godna?
Thank you. I was supportive of this when it was down at one end of the square. I'm supportive of this now. Devil's in the detail, so I have a couple of questions for you. And I'm sorry I didn't get into you beforehand. I've had the flu for a couple of weeks. Couple of suggestions. One is, we've all mentioned exactly what we're hearing out in the public, which is parking, traffic, and the canyon effect. And I think that you might benefit by adding your frequently asked questions. How are we going to prohibit, or how are we going to not have the canyon effect? It's very easy for people to point to Rantoul Street and say, it's like the Star Wars movie when they dive into, you know, into the, it's a canyon. It's horrible. I went down there the other day with a friend of mine for breakfast, and it's just looming. And I know we've addressed it. So, it's an easy question to answer.
Yep, absolutely.
I think that should become part of it. I think, I think the first three things should be parking, traffic, canyon effect. Because after that, then you're getting into more minutia and details, and those are the three things people are going to talk about the most. I think part of the parking issue is, we're all used to Davis being a bedroom community with the presumption that the world is the same as it was 20, 30, 40 years ago where every adult in a household had a car. That's not the case in this day and age where none of us are millennials on this, sitting behind this desk. But that's not the way the world works. On both ends of the spectrum, the young people, the younger generation and the older generation, don't live by the motto of every adult has to own a car. Think about Maple Street. The Danvis Housing Authority has Maple Street, 38 units. They don't have, they don't have 72 parking spots for Maple Street. They function very well. Those are some of the candidates for people who are going to want to live downtown. The senior adults, even if it's a senior couple, they're not necessarily going to have two cars if they have a one-bedroom and two adults. And as we've heard from others, and totally because not by experience, the millennials aren't embracing car ownership as a by right. They'll use the bus to Salem to the, they'd rather take the bus to Salem train station than drive and absorb all the cost of a car. So, I think one of the things is getting away from the mindset that every adult in an apartment is going to have a car. I know we lament the traffic through town, but the reality is, and we've heard this on this board from various reports, primarily, the traffic in this town is pass-through traffic. We live at the confluence of two, three major highways, 93-1 and 128. And it's, people are passing through our town to get to those highways, to get to Boston, to metro areas. So, and I, we had a presentation two meetings ago where I was actually surprised to learn that in 10 years, we've only had 1,400 people added to the population. In 10 years, only 1,400 people. Even if all those people had a car, you know, that's only 1,400 more cars in town. That's not what is causing the traffic in town. So, I want to get away from the fact that if we stop putting people downtown in a residential opportunity, we're going to add that many more cars and that many more, that much more traffic in town. We obviously, we will add some, no doubt about it. But it's not exponential, and it's not something that people won't get around. During the weekend, if I have to go from one's my house on, you know, on Lindell Hill to the other side of the town, I know the backroads now. I'm not going to necessarily go through town because I know it's traffic-bound at some points. And I agree that this is an important step to relieving the ZBA of having to make those case-by-case, piecemeal decisions. They don't have the opportunity when an applicant is before them to do the big picture. That's what the Planning Board does, and I appreciate their efforts. Planning Board is big picture. ZBA is an applicant asking to break the law or to be, have a variance from the law. Zoning laws are those. They are laws. Someone's coming in before them to say, why should I not be compelled by that law? So, they're doing it on a case-by-case basis. They're not looking at the big picture. And it's hard for them to, nor should they be, trying to divine the future view of Danvis. That is, that's the Planning Board, very important distinction. So, I think it's important to provide a tool to eliminate the need for the case-by-case decisions. So, a couple of questions, just for consideration for the next presentations. You probably don't have the whole one in front of you, but there was a building and property use table. It described all the special permits and permits by, broken down between DTCC and so on and so forth. Are any of these, is there any addition? And the other important point that should be made, maybe even the frequently asked question, this is a zoning overlay. It is optional and discretionary by the person who may want to, shaking your head, no, by the person who wants to develop in that manner. It doesn't, it is not a mandate. If you want to develop in this current, tell me why I'm wrong. Go ahead.
Base zoning change.
I'm sorry.
This is, this is a base zoning change. We had this conversation back in December when our 40R application was approved but not, approved but not approved.
Okay, so this is a base change. Okay. One of the things I want to, I knew you had mentioned it last time, we are not going for 40R with this.
Correct.
Okay, I realized one of the other, one of the other Selectmen had referred to it.
I've been corrected.
Okay. I didn't mean to correct you. I just, I want to take that off the table because I am going to talk about affordability in a couple of minutes.
Yep, yep.
Okay. Are there any, the question I had on this table of building and property uses, are there any business or types of uses that have become by right that weren't originally by right? I mean, we're looking at like daycares and, you know, restaurant
You're saying, are there uses that
That by nature of the underlying change
Yep.
become by right that weren't by right?
Residential.
Residential, that's it. Okay, just residential.
There are uses predominantly in the I-1 area that we're prohibiting in the new, and Steve mentioned those, like warehousing
Okay.
and Steve mentioned those, like warehousing, self-storage. Some of those uses, I think Marina, there was some pretty serious industrial uses that will no longer be permitted.
So we have not?
Some of those went to special.
Other than residential, we haven't allowed any different use, but we have retracted some use.
Right, but we were pretty careful. We went through the book and made, you know, we're trying to figure out who's doing what now.
Mm-hmm.
For the most part, in I, C-1, C-1A, and I-1,
Yep.
most properties are taking advantage of retail opportunities that are permitted in the new district.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Another question. Where does outdoor timing and terraces for, you know, to kind of talk about outdoor amenities? If it's in front of a business and they say that's part of their outdoor amenities, is it restricted to their, that business use?
Again, that could depend, because again, if it were an outdoor cafe and there's, have a liquor license,
Right.
that could nuance that. I'd have to get back to you on the specifics of.
An example, Duncan Donuts on Maple Street, if they started putting out tables and chairs.
Right.
And they developed and said, oh, this is part of the conditions of our outdoor use. Is it then restricted to the outdoor use? Does, if it's a general public outdoor use, does it restrict the use of the tables and chairs to their patrons?
Yep.
And I just use that as a broad example, nothing about that business.
Yep. No, but I'll have to get back to you on the specifics. I don't have it off the top of my head.
So now I do want to talk about the affordability section. Actually, as most people know, Dan and I were on the Davis Affordable, was it Housing Committee? Housing Committee years ago, which then more, developed into the Affordable Housing Trust, which I've been the chairman of many years now, and helped craft the multifamily affordability provision, Section 30.2 in the current zoning bylaws. I guess I'm, I always waver on going to public meetings as a selectman where being in the audience as a selectman may change, you know, may affect the tenor of the discussion. I want boards and commissions to have the full availability to have their meetings and not have a selectman in the room, because I'm not there as an oversight person. I'm not there to judge or look at them. I would be going as a citizen. But I kind of pick and choose which ones I actually go to. I go to a lot of the early ones, and especially the last zoning go-through down at the Locust Street end, because there was, it was all new to everybody. This, I saw the methodology. I was comfortable that the planning board and your department and the town would go through the same methodology, and I was very satisfied that it elicited input and information from everybody that should give it. But I didn't, what I didn't see, what I don't see in what you're talking about for affordability, I kind of would have liked to have some discussions at the Affordable Housing Trust meetings about the language here. Because it does vary from the language that Dan and I helped craft prior to the trust for the, in working with the planning board, for the affordability in the multifamily. And I think that that may cause confusion. It did for me, just reading it. The tables here are different as far as when there is monetary payments and when our units are prescribed. And I would have preferred to have them aligned in either direction with some discussion behind it. Because I, in the years that it's been here, we have, I actually take a little bit of umbrage in the questions and answers that we got tonight that talked about the affordability component, saying that the Affordable Trust has had problems, and I'm paraphrasing,
Yep.
has had issues with the language. I don't think we have. We've had one-offs, not unlike the ZBA, where people have come to us and said, hey, we know we're not compelled by, but we know the ZBA will ask us, have you talked to the Affordable Housing Trust? Because we're trying to add 14 units, and we want to know the effect of that. We have yet to had a problem where in the table of fractional units and how much we charge have a problem. So I think that the, there's a, there's not continuity between the two, and I would have preferred to, I would prefer to have the continuity on the numbers. The other thing is, and being very self-serving for the Affordable Housing Trust, it says that fees may go to the town, town of Deambres for housing purposes. I would actually like it to specifically say, go to the trust, not unlike the.
That's the intent. We didn't name it because we didn't know, you know, again, it's changed once in a decade. We didn't.
Well, it's only been formed once. It hasn't changed. We had a committee, and that committee morphed into the trust. The trust is empowered and by state law. And my preference would be have it named as the beneficiary of those, because that is the charter in charge of that trust. I'm throwing these out. You did copy the language for segmentation and continuity. You also, in here, there is decision-making under comparability about who will decide. And I, you don't spell out who makes the decision. Who's the decision-making authority on that? Whether it be the trust or whether it be the, actually, I don't know who it would be if it were not. Is it, does it fall to the building inspector? Does it?
Well, if they plan on putting them on the SHI, it'd be DHCD, which is what we want.
There is my biggest one right there. Nothing in here says it has to be on the DHCD, SHI. Says it has to be a certain amount of affordability, but nothing in here compels it to them to go through the application process of being on the DHCD roster and SHI. And I think that's an extremely important thing to add back in.
I'll double check that. That's the intent.
Okay, I get the intent.
Yeah.
My problem is, if the applicant says, oh, this is too laborious a process, because the SHI process, as you know, is long and lengthy and exacting in how they determine affordability, how they do the lottery, how they do the awarding, and the process for which they go through to get it on the SHI. We are at 10.3, fortunately just above. We are cautious about what 2020 census will do to us. But part of the impetus for this entire section is making sure we protect ourselves from 40B. And that protection only happens if it is on SHI. If it's not on SHI and still deemed affordable, DHCD won't care. So that's the biggest thing I need to see happen here, is language that says it has to be put on the SHI. And then I would just recommend you go through the, there's a couple of sections that were kind of dropped. This had no alternative requirements or off-site conditioning, and I actually don't think it's necessary. The multifamily did, and the reason the multifamily did allow for off-site opportunities is, a perfect example is we had a development where they developed million-dollar condos. And we would not have expected them to give away a million-dollar condo, and I shouldn't say in that manner, to provide a million-dollar condo at affordable rates. That would be a hardship. We had a, we had, we have in here an alternative requirements component that says they could, the developer could develop off-site conditions. So I don't think you need it. But I would just ask that you go back through Section 30.216 and just affirm close compatibility. And tell us, and if it isn't, you know, talk to the trust and say, you know, why we're recommending this. If it goes through separately, that's fine. They are different zones. I get it. I just think if we're trying to get to consistency, there's a place to do it. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. It was a good point, Scott, and I appreciate it. Couple unanswered questions I had from last week. When you got to the size, the minimum size of the two bedrooms, for example, 900 square feet in Danvers, Bayview Ave, McDulav, Purchase Street, the average two-bedroom unit is under 800 square feet because McDulav is so small. So I was just wondering where you came up with 900, given that we want affordable units and the cost of building that extra 100 square feet?
I think we set the minimum sizes at the staff level. I would say that that didn't come up through the process with the planning board or with the public. I, so when staff talked about those with our consultant, Mr. Brovitz, I'll be frank with you, it really had more to do, not much to do with affordable housing, capital A, but more about if we were going to have two smaller units, would that create a politically untenable situation? In that it's not uncommon for these sorts of proposals to get a lot of heat from the public in that you're going to overwhelm us with smaller units. We thought the unit sizes that we offered were certainly small for the Danvers marketplace. And I will tell you candidly, at the staff level, those limits could be reduced further if there's support on the board for that. I don't think, again, that that's a concern that came out through the process. But again, we were worried that smaller units might mean more units on smaller parcels, and we thought we struck a balance with the size limits that we proposed that kind of balanced that out.
I don't have any qualms with the studio size, the one-bedroom size. I just think.
It's that two-bedroom?
It's that two-bedroom one. Just professionally looking at that 900 square feet, yeah, it's.
I apologize, off the top of my head, it was, if we set it at 900, I think more like 800 would.
I think 800 would be in keeping with what's in the community. And I don't think you would add that many more units, because I think you have a minimum number of units per parcel anyways.
Maximum.
Maximum, right. So, sorry. So, just something to look at.
Okay.
And the other one was the two spots per 10 at the front for electric vehicles. It's, today, that might be adequate.
Yep.
But in the near term, they figure that new car sales, electric vehicles would be approaching 15%.
Yeah, and I think on that one, we were, we were thinking where we're at today, that was appropriate standard. I don't disagree.
I mean, that's something.
If you own an electric vehicle, so I might be the only one in the room with one, I would anticipate that number to go up, and that's one of those details that I think that we would revisit five years down the road once we're sure that that utilization is actually coming to fruition.
Well, if you, if somebody has dictated two spots now, and they develop it, and then five years, you feel that you need to change it, how do you tell that person that's already, has the permission for the two per 10 to change it?
Things evolve.
Things evolve.
I think a lot of people think zoning is set in stone, and as a planner, I would tell you that's probably the, you know.
I never heard it was set in stone.
Yeah, it's a detrimental view on zoning. We should be constantly coming back and reviewing and revising.
And those are just two things that I see, that you need to be flexible now or going forwards. And you answered my other questions, thank you. Given the, on page 68, the purpose and intent of this character-based zoning district, I completely agree with the purpose and the intent. But when you get into all the details, it's 159 pages, it becomes a horse of a different color, without a doubt, when you start reading the details.
It's a complicated piece of legislation.
Complicated, right, so.
And I think for better or for worse, I mean, that's, we've really focused on, as we built off of the Maple Street model, I mean, it's, half of it's design standards, really. I mean, it's about how are you going to make this thing look and interact with its environment, and less about what you're doing in the building. I think we've kind of evolved past worrying about, you know, specific uses and really now look and feel, and how is this going to interact? And then again, I think our purpose here is to make sure that development's checking off more than one box as it goes forward. And I think, so you got to have a lot, unfortunately, a lot of words to make sure that that comes to fruition.
And there's a lot of detail in here. Thank you. Anybody in the audience wish to weigh in?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a clarifying question before? And I'm going to look to the content area experts on this, but with respect to zoning changes that move through this process, I know that at-town meeting, you can, you can only restrict, you cannot expand what's been proposed. So would the board have the discretion at this point to change the minimum? Yes. So at this point, so it's something that we'd have to talk about tonight, because when it moves to the finance committee, I think we want to be clear.
Not there.
Do you want to come to the microphone?
Introduce yourself.
Richard P. Maloney, Inspector of Buildings. The 800, 900 square feet, my experience is, we have the in-law bylaw, which is 750 square feet for one bedroom, and most people find that restrictive, very restrictive. So they, the Board of Appeals allows a special permit to vary any of the requirements of the in-law bylaw. And people generally come back, and the ZBA's been, you know, they understand that size restriction. You know, we wrote that bylaw, and they've been generous up to 1,000 square feet, but that's where they draw the line. But, and people usually feel better with that extra 250 square feet. So the 750 is tight. I would just say that from my experience in the people that are using the in-laws.
Okay.
As an example.
Well, if I may, somebody with an in-law, they're trying to get as, max as much space out of, that they can get in their property. We're talking here about building units in a larger building. So we're not talking about expanding.
The buildings you're talking about are all 1960s-era, they were built as apartments.
Right, oh, I know.
Really, the standards from, from the TV size to bed size has expanded greatly.
Yeah, the TV alone adds the 100 square feet.
You know, just as an example, so those, when you go into those apartments nowadays, and I've been in a few, recently, Cleatree's property on Collins Street, in 1960s-era, two-bedroom, the living room and the kitchen are one room, very tight. That's, just as an observation.
Well, I only bring it up because it exists. Thank you. You got a question over here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matthew Doug, in town meeting member, precinct one. I'm just confused with the material that I received in the mail, the warrant and explanation report. So for Article Number Five, that speaks to the character-based zoning districts, the following information is really just a summary and kind of verbiage that is, just tries to give a high-level perspective, but there's no actual legal language that I see. I think I heard the board mention like page 68. Is there some other document that kind of actually defines what will be in the, in the actual zoning legal language?
Well, I'll offer, and somebody will correct me if I'm wrong, I'm sure, in the larger document, it's a proposed motion to insert a new Section 5.4 character-based zoning district and renumber the subsequent sections, district boundaries appropriately by inserting the following. And it talks about Danvers town-centered core live-work.
Yeah, I see that, yep.
But that's, that's, I think, is what will be the zoning proposal.
Yeah, if I can speak to that, I think, because we're going to reissue the warrant, we're going to add a sentence here that says, the document that has been referenced tonight is 98 pages long. It's on the town website right now, and we want to direct town meeting members to the website first. But anyone who wants a hard copy, all they have to do is call us, and we'll make a copy. But we didn't want to make 144 copies of a 100-page document right out of the gate.
No, I understand.
But it is online, and we'll make it clearer when we reissue this that they could, where you can find it.
That's fair. And then just to that point, sometimes people have trouble navigating the website where it's kind of like, you know, like a rabbit hole, where you go down it, and then you're suddenly, you know, somewhere else, so.
It's on the very first page. So to let you know, I went to the website to get these two documents, and I would actually ask, I'm sorry to interrupt. This document, which the chairman just referred to, which is the actual language,
Yeah.
and this document, which is the design standard and guidelines, are on the very first page. There's maybe halfway down, there's a planning board link right there.
Okay.
But I would ask, based on that, I was going to ask, can you also somewhere describe the exact, you know, the reference, the fact that this references the design standard and guidelines? Because they go hand in hand.
That, isn't it?
This does not contain everything that's here, does it? No. Right. But earlier, the chairman said he and I talked. I'm not going to, like I said, I'm not going to talk about, you know, talk about, you know, the height of a cupola, or, you know, or the dimension of a setback. I expect the building inspector and the planning board and all the other boards to know what that is. But this should plainly reference that this is the standards by which we're following.
I think we can make that clear in the warrant when it's reissued.
Okay.
All right, that answers my question. Thank you very much.
Everybody else, questions, comments?
Dan, could I?
Oh, please.
Nova Samadé, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. I'd like to just be a voice in support of this and of Rancho Street in Beverly. Yes, I understand that the building's real tall, can be kind of a corridor, whatever, but it is vibrant. There is things happening, there are people out doing things. If I drive there to go to a restaurant, if I have to drive around a little bit to find a parking space, it's fine. It's fine. I don't leave, I don't say, forget it, I'm not going to eat here because I can't find a parking space within two minutes' walk. If I have to walk five minutes, 10 minutes to the restaurant, it's fine. It's totally fine. And yes, Danvers, I've only lived here, what, 15 years? So I'm not from here, I don't know what it was like 40, 50, 60 years ago, but the towns around us are becoming more lively, more vibrant, and we are not. We go to these other towns, Peabody even, Salem, Beverly, and we go, wouldn't it be nice if Danvers had this? Wouldn't it be nice? Wouldn't it be nice? And it's not happening. It's still not. And so we really need to move forward. We really do as a town. It's not going back. It is not going back to what it used to be. So we need to go forward in a positive way. High Street currently, it's not lovely. Let's not act like it's, you know, there's some businesses I frequent, that I love, but it's not a great strip of street. It's not anywhere anyone wants to hang out. So I just want to voice my support of some vibrancy. This town needs it. Yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I think that's the intent of this, is to give it a direction, it's a, it's a, it's a format to work with. And people say 30 years, I hope it doesn't take 30 years to do. Please, Annette, welcome.
And that's Collins, Precinct One, Town Meeting Member. I also want to thank you for the questions that you asked tonight, because a lot of them I have written and asked myself, and had people ask me. And Bill, to your point about, you haven't heard anything positive about from people coming up to you, but we all know, in this world, people will complain out loud to whoever will listen. And they aren't so quick to come up to you and tell you, wow, this is a lot of work, it sounds like a good idea. I personally think it's a great plan. I'm not at all a learned person about the ins and outs of zoning, but I do know, from where I live, that of course, people have tried to do things with their homes that have not been allowed, because we do have zoning that works. And I think that to think about the next 30 years, and I've been here now for 50 years, and I, I don't remember everything, because I was, must have been a baby when I got here, but really and truly, the, you cannot stop progress, we know that. The traffic thing, I've seen from where I grew up, out in the Berkshires, that there are ways to minimize and to try to change things up a little bit, so cut through people, and that's what I do agree. We have a lot of pass-through people who come through here. If, if there were some kinds of irritating things that made life easier for us on the square, such as build-outs, where we could gather and sit, just as a public group, and then maybe people would be like, okay, we've got to avoid Danvers Square, because you can't get from one end to the other. There have got to be other ways to approach the streetscape, which would encourage our people, us, these people who love Danvers, to actually come downtown and walk, or maybe park in the outskirts and walk. And then, as that happens, the encouragement and the spirit of community will drive more people to come to the center and to maybe give an opinion and some feedback, and help the rest of us move forward. And I hope I'm here in 30 years, but I think this is a plan that moves us. And I do not believe in all this gossip and this exchange that's going on out there, where people don't get information, thank you Diane for pointing that out, ask the right people, get the facts, and then make a concerted effort to have a give-and-take with people who know what's going on. But to actually just sit around and naysay is not helping anyone. So I want to thank everybody. I love this town, I am a transplant, but I feel it's one of the best places on earth. So, thank you.
Thank you. And just a comment, you made an observation today, when I was in the B-town, city next door to us, on Odd Street, by St. Mary's. They actually took away parking spaces on the St. Mary's side, and they've got these kickouts on the sidewalks, and it looked very attractive. There's still a lot of orange cones up, because they're still doing the work. But it was very interesting, I'd drive from the old police station, or probably still the current, down a ways towards West Dane Street. A lot of changes, and it actually looked attractive. So, I know you've talked about kickouts and grassy areas downtown, so I look forward to those conversations going forwards, after we get this through town meeting. That's the main goal tonight, is to move this on. So it goes to the FinCom, next. Anybody else on the table have anything to say?
Dan?
Yes, David.
I just wanted to make a comment to Aaron and Steve. You know, in Boston, as I recall, there's blue peas for parking. And so going through Boston, you kind of know where the parking is. Why do we have to wait for rezoning, to do some signage now for our available, because among other things, people at the town meeting, at the Finance Committee, are going to know more of what the proponent, planning board, is talking about, when it's just so, why not do it now? Just a thought.
Thank you.
I think we have $90,000 we got tonight from the state, too.
Sorry, Bill.
We just got $90,000 more dollars from the state for-
Chapter 90 money?
Chapters, yeah.
I bet TPW would love to give a few signs.
So you could find some money for some signs in there, maybe.
Well, it's an excellent question. What came out of one of the prior studies that we did, at the back end of the parking study, not the traffic study, the parking study that was completed in 2015, was then followed up with a grant from, I think it was DHCD's Downtown Initiative Program, for signage and wayfinding and signage program. That was completed in the fall of 2018. I was on staff when we completed that. So we have a identified areas in and around the square, I think traditionally, you kind of see it like, oh, the parking lot's right here. We had a conversation about, well, you might need to notify people a quarter mile early that parking is this way, and parking, you know, or the businesses are this way. So we had that conversation. So we are ready to, in theory, to implement that proposal. At the moment, it's, it's not in a budget, but I, you know, we are ready to go on that, and we will explore all options.
To sell this proposal to the town meeting and to the Finance Committee, and to anybody else that's interested, maybe doing it now, if it can be done, will be helpful.
Aaron, at one of the workshops, weren't some signage drawings done? I mean, you're that close, that-
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, we have a signed package.
Right.
You know, I think at one point, there was, should it be this logo or that logo? I think we kind of, in the end, dumbed it down, and just said, let's kind of maybe avoid the Design Committee approach to what the sign should look like, and just kind of focus on the substance. But we have that, and we're ready to go. So it's a great, great comment, and I'll talk to Mr. Bartha about giving me more money.
I still don't think you have enough parking.
I think you just got it, Aaron.
I don't think you have enough parking, but I want you to have a fair shot at the town meeting. Do everything you can to market your product.
Yep.
Well, just to be clear, I don't think we have the signs up prior to town meeting, but if the, if the report is not on the website yet, it will be. And it, it identifies where these signs should go, and sometimes it's as simple, using Elm Street as an example, if you don't know the downtown, you want your parking sign to say, town center, .2 miles ahead, public parking here, because someone's going to say, oh, I can walk .2 miles. If you don't have the distances, people are going to keep driving, because they don't know what, so it's, sometimes it's as simple as that. But we, I guess to, to the point, we have that now.
And a lot of times circling the block happens, because, you know, you're trying to get lucky, but a lot of people will just say, well, I, I know I can get a parking space 350 feet away, I'll just take my chances and get the spot, rather than try to hunt and peck for, you know, the gold standard spot. So that's something I'll-
Everybody's wearing a Fitbit. Everybody wants to get their 10,000 steps in.
I'm not close today.
Okay.
Neither am I.
All set? All right, what's the will of the board? We need to pass this on to the FinCom, where the favorable vote or unfavorable?
To make a motion that we pass on Articles 1 through 5 with a favorable recommendation to the FinCom?
We've already had 1 through 4.
We took individual votes. Thank you. Well, any second?
Second.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None? Thank you. What's your? Propose? Propose? Okay, 4 to 1. All right, number six?
Thank you, I'm sure I'll get a copy of myself.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Town Manager, number six?
Number six won't even appear in the next one, we don't need it.
You said earlier, okay. So we're done with the warrant?
Yep.
I missed the vote on five.
4 to 1.
4 to 1.
Okay.
Thank you, Aaron, he left.
And the, and the planning board.
Thank you. We didn't give you an option to weigh in, I'm sorry. You're okay.
He was great.
Let's see, we'll turn the page. The Town Manager will report to the board on various items of interest, Mr. Town Manager.
What could be more interesting than-
Zoning.
The warrant we just reviewed. I do have a couple. I wanted to just mention briefly, we, I reported previously that Peter Morandi, our longtime Director of Public Health, and our veteran service officer, is retiring this spring. We have posted advertisements for two positions. He was the last of the many multiple hat wearers in Danvers. The state has been asking us for the better part of two decades to hire a standalone VSO. We, we have countered that. The model here in Danvers has worked very well. We had Larry Wood, our former HR Director, who was a veteran, who filled that role prior to Peter Morandi, who was our Health Director. As long as we had a person that could, could fill that dual role, we were, we were satisfied with that. We're at a point where both caseload and current staffing indicates that we need to do a search. So that's on the website, if anybody has or knows qualified candidates, please direct them toward the posting. And we also have the Health Director position on the website. So those are two sort of key positions that we'll be looking to fill this spring. Quick update on the healthcare work that we've been doing over the past year, we, we completed our work with the unions. We signed an agreement with them in mid-December, indicating how the savings that are to be shared as a result of this transfer to a new health plan are going to work. And they ultimately decided to offer one week premium holidays to employees in December of the next two years. And so with that process complete, we'll be able to implement the plan design changes into the fiscal year 21 budget that we're going to start talking about in a couple of months. And actually, the next day or two, we'll be communicating with all staff in terms of what those, what the plan options are going to look like on July 1st of 2020.
What does that one week premium mean?
So for, under the law, when, when you adopt a plan, we, this board adopted Sections 21 to 23 in the fall, and a calculation must be done in terms of what the premiums would have been if no change were made versus what they are. And 25% of those savings are allocated toward, to benefit the employees in a manner of their choosing, essentially. So some places will set up health reimbursement accounts, in this case, the PEC and the retirees. PEC is the Public Employee Committee. Essentially, it's the union heads, and then Lenny Marshall, representing the retirees, voted to, based on the value of the savings, to offer a premium, meaning for one week in December of the next two years, employees won't have to pay their portion of the premium for their health insurance. It's a very common, I mean, that's a very common election when, when this process is completed. So those will, we'll be able to, we'll be able to, the retirees have already started to move as of January 1st of this year, and then the rest of the changes will be effective July 1st of 2020. So we'll, we'll be presenting on that as part of the budget process. I wanted to mention, you did receive copies tonight of the budget and warrant schedule. We ran these through the Chair of the Finance Committee, and the Chair of Board Selectmen, and Town Moderator, looking, looking at last year's schedule. We projected out what a, what a proposed schedule could look like for the, for the May town meeting, in the run-up to that. And I, if you've had a chance to review it, or if you have comments or thoughts on that, we could, we can take those afterwards.
I'll take it myself, unless you want to.
And then I wanted to just briefly reference several items that were provided in December for the meeting that was canceled. But there were three documents that were provided to the board in December. One was a, an overview from our OPM on the Smith Project, just noting where that project is. We're pouring footings in foundations as we speak, and I'm, I'm pleased to report, we've, we've made it through most of the major bid packages, including steel, and concrete, and electrical, and HVAC, and everything, everything right now is on or under budget. And the winter has been favorable, so the work is proceeding. So that, the project is, is moving along quite well. The second item was a, a summary report of an IT, a regional IT study that we were able to complete using a state grant. There are a lot of small municipalities on the North Shore that have expressed great interest in partnering with Danvers in some capacity in terms of IT. Some of our municipal neighbors have part-time, part-time IT consultants who live in Arizona. So when something goes wrong in their town hall, they're, they're calling Arizona to try to get help. Because of our electric department, and, and the police department, and really the complexity of our systems, we have capacity to help them answer some of those questions. And in the case of Essex, we already have a partner who has contracted with the town to provide their backend support. So if you've had a chance to read through that study, there's some interesting recommendations in there. We'll be meeting with the rest of the group again at the end of the month to talk about some low-hanging fruit that we can explore in terms of cost efficiencies and partnerships. And then lastly, I provided an email from Sharon Clement in our Public Works Department with a link to the Municipal Vulnerability Program presentation that the chairman and I participated, it was a full-day workshop on December 5th, with representatives from the community and staff, to, to work with Weston and Sampson on our municipal vulnerability planning, which, which will, the data from which can be used to, to help with some of the climate change items that the board was discussing as part of their goal-setting for the year. That's all I have.
Thank you. The consent calendar?
I move. We accept the consent calendar as presented?
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll second it, but I'd like to make a comment to the public, there's 59 consents we have this week on a consent calendar. People don't realize the number of licenses that come up for renewal at the beginning of the year. I know, I know, we had, we already had a few earlier.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, and, thank you. And while, just beyond the consent calendar, I just want to read the dates coming up. Tuesday, January 14th, the FinCom will have the warrant. Anybody's welcome to join me there. The next selectmen's meeting, January 21st. Special town meeting, February 10th. Does the moderator want his skull session in preparation?
Yes.
So you'll-
I believe that's on the, is that not on the schedule?
No, the schedule is about budget.
Yeah.
That'll be forthcoming.
No, this is the next town meeting.
Yeah.
Also, Dan, February 1 warrant article's not on that.
The town meeting, meeting.
February 1 warrant workshop.
For town meeting members, right.
Right, but it's not on our dates. It's an all-day, right?
That's an all-day.
Generally, it's 9:00 to noon. Are you talking about for the budget, or for the-
Warrant. I had in my calendar, February 1.
February 1, 9:00 AM in this room, we went to about noon last time. We'll stay as long as we need to.
Okay, so 9:12, I'm just trying to get it blocked off.
Okay.
And Dan, just to answer your question- And Dan, just to answer your question, I, we'll communicate by email tomorrow. There will be a skull session.
Yeah, I, I just didn't know that.
And I saw an email going around. I don't have it in my calendar.
I didn't see that email. Okay, very good. Thank you. No, I don't think so either. Okey-dokey. Now, Selectmen's New Business, Previous Public Business Updates, Closing Comments. Bill?
Okay, as we've done in the past months and years now, I'd like to recognize two long-term town employees who passed away in the last two weeks. One of them was Jackie Getchel, who was the face of the Planning Department and the Recreation Department on the second floor for many, many years. Very sweet woman who always was out there to help you, and I will be missing Jackie greatly. The other one is a very close friend of mine, a neighbor for almost 50, over 50 years, Simone Holland, who many people don't know possibly. She's a British war bride, but she was a wonderful, wonderful woman who went back to school and got her associate's degree and was a teacherate at the high school in the Foreign Language Department for many, many years. And she gave that school, the Foreign Language Department, a great gift because she was a native French speaker coming from Europe, and she went along on several trips to Europe with the students in her later years.
Belgium.
Huh?
Belgium. She was from Belgium.
She came from Belgium, exactly, yeah. Sweetheart, nice lady. She just passed away this past week, and her daughter also taught at the embassy.
I did that last time. I'd asked David earlier.
Okay. All set?
Yep.
David?
Thank you, Dan. The Danvers Human Rights and Inclusion Committee, I believe that has requested the Chairman to put on the agenda for the 20, the meeting on January 21st, their request that the Board of Selectmen endorse or endorse pending legislation to change the name of the Christopher Columbus Holiday. So they asked that I may, you know, make it public, that they will be here the 21st. I believe, Dan, that that is scheduled for the 21st.
Not that I'm aware of.
I think that Steve and Ian may have plugged it in, or we'll be asking you to put it on the agenda.
21st of January?
Yeah, our next, is that our next meeting?
Yep.
Yes.
I have not seen the agenda yet. Thank you.
I think that you are in charge of the agenda, so...
Well, you haven't seen it yet. Thank you. Look forward to that discussion. All set?
Thank you, Dan.
Diane?
So with the February 1 meeting I've already brought up, you didn't announce the change in our March meetings.
I haven't got there yet.
Okay. And then we, I remember some years ago, the removal of the Christmas tree being a subject, and if my brain is still working, it had to do with two things. One is tree disposal, and two was that it loses weight. I know this came up, and it is a danger in our February storms and the storms.
Thanks.
The DPW really likes to get rid of that tree. Remember the year it fell over? It was nothing funnier than that.
Somebody in that, somebody had a tree fall over just recently, a big Christmas tree, in one of the communities. It didn't hit anything.
Yeah, that was funny.
Oh, yeah.
But that's, I do remember that being discussed.
Good, thank you for that. Okay, anything else?
Nope. I went to the last rail trail meeting just to say that Aaron was there. He gave us an update on the extension. We're all set, you know, as far as what we asked for in our last budget as of today. And they really are addressing the different things that are, the different bridges that could be made for between Hobart and Maple Street. There's that area there that they have to bill something over, and that's the designs that they're working on because of now. So it'll be a while, but that would be the first step going forward. So they are moving forward on the Hobart to Maple Street.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Go ahead.
Thank you. With the holidays and with the canceled meeting, we did not have an opportunity to recognize the passing of a former Selectman, Stan Svensson. Served two terms on this board, if I believe, if I'm accurate. One? Yeah, two terms. One? Okay.
Not relevant.
Not relevant. Stan served the community not only as a Selectman, but also as the Chairman of the Municipal Light Board, and his service was greatly appreciated. How you like Stan? I like Stan. I like his father. Just a jovial guy, nice guy, and we're at a loss with his past, so I want to recognize that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
New business ideas. I was encouraged to think about mitigation of pass-through traffic. And I'm just going to throw this over to the Town Manager for some future thought, not right away, long-term. I think there's two things that we can consider, and I've mentioned this one before, but I think we need to have two-lane striping between Elliott and the 128 Overpass. It's kind of done as a de facto right now. Going up that street, you know, if it's striped and marked for left-only, I think that'll help alleviate some of the congestion. The other one is a radical idea, but I think sometimes we have to think radically. To minimize the pass-through downtown, we might consider making Maple Street one-way between Hobart and Locust up to Poplar. So as people are coming across 62, instead of cutting through downtown to get to 128, they continue up 62 to 128. It'll be a radical change. I understand, but I think that townspeople may appreciate the fact that a lot of that traffic is left on the major roadway to get to 128 and not clogging downtown. Just a thought that I'll...
Say that area again, please.
Create a, there is a Maple Street from Hobart, from Hobart and Locust with, I'll say the fire station, the old fire station, up to Poplar, as if you're traveling towards Middleton.
You know, that was brought up once before, and the residents said, no, but now maybe with the new zoning, that might be something to readdress again.
It's a thought?
Yeah, no.
Just to throw, you know, maybe it'll be soundly rebuked. That's okay.
So, God, great minds think alike. The Town Manager and I, the other day in conversation, talking about, it's time to look at making downtown one-way, averting the traffic somehow.
Sure.
Whatever that evolves into.
Maybe with the new zoning, it might be a...
Right, so once we get this done...
Yep.
We can start...
But while it was fresh in my mind and based on comments from the audience...
We can ask DTAC to start looking at it.
Yeah.
Sure.
From the traffic, with their traffic consultant.
Absolutely.
So I think that unless somebody disagrees, I think it's, kind of just get it on the table, start discussing.
I go from Hobart Street downtown too many times. It would be very difficult to make the whole downtown one-way.
Not the whole, I'm recommending that.
No, no, I'm talking about that.
We're not going to debate it now. We're just, it's an idea, it's a thought.
You want another thought? You take the old railroad track from Maple Street and Vineyard, and you make that a one-way street down all the way to Purchase Street, and you have people being able to come from Middleton all the way through the square down, over across Hobart, and not even, you know, you would take what's being planned for rail trail.
But see, if we can get control of that area.
Can I get Liberty Street open while we're at it?
The town owns it. The town owns it.
Man, I can't open a can of worms, didn't I?
No, it's, we're thinking about it. What else, God?
So we're thinking. So then the last thing I had to, I wanted to mention is, this is a civic consideration. As I mentioned a couple of meetings ago, Danvers Family Festival is looking forward to our 2020 season. We have a lot of good activities planned. Not only the activities at Family Festival plans, but all the civic and social organizations that do their own. We are scaling back on some of the Family Festival managed events, but one of the things we have is a call to arms. Our board has dwindled as a lot of boards and civic and social organizations have happened to the point where after 2020, it would not be sustainable with the seven or eight people who would be left on the board. We have, you've seen information in the press, on Facebook. We have our next meeting on January 14th at the DCAT Studios. And if you would like to be considered as a board member, we would love to have you come to that meeting, understand and learn about what Family Festival is and does and how much work is involved. Many hands make light work. We would need people to dedicate six meetings between now and Family Festival 2020. And we have six to eight meetings a year in organization, but it's getting very, very light on the board at this time. So go to www.dff2020.org for more information. You can email me for more information. You can email the Chairperson, Cheryl James, and her, her email is on those pages. If you have any interest in seeing the sustainability and viability of Family Festival after 2020, we'd love to have your input and fresh ideas. Thank you.
Thank you. So it is getting late, and some of us are drifting away. In March, we're changing our meeting schedule to the 2nd and 4th Tuesday, which are the 10th and the 24th, driven partly by the election on March 3rd. So we'll go to the 10th and the 24th. Mr. Town Manager, the building inspector left. I wanted to ask him if flashing red lights at the atrium in the windows are appropriate, the flashing tattoos, tattoos?
I don't believe so, and we've seen a few of those. So he and I can have a discussion tomorrow morning about...
Right. And now, he did address the flashing Remax sign on the side of the building, but that building is getting very flashy. Something under new business, actually, it's not new, but everybody got their Happy New Year's card from the town in the form of a tax bill this past week. And it got me to thinking, when I looked at my tax bill, that perhaps we can ask the Chief Assessor next year to give us a little more detail in the assessing for the properties. When he made the presentation, he alluded to residential, commercial, and overall percentage of 5.7% increase in property values. Never mentioned Class 104 or Class 105. So I kind of feel that we got the eighth-grade synopsis on assessing values. Had I known in November that my taxes were going to go up 18%, I could have gone out and got a seasonal job. Mr. Trask alluded to, it's a meal. How much did your meal cost you?
I have an average house, so it cost me about $300 more a year.
Yeah, that was the average. So you went, ate at a pizza parlor. I got charged for a bottle of wine, two entrees, and two desserts at Daniella's with no warning. So I hope next year, we'll get a little more details from the assessments. With that, we'll go to, let's keep our veterans in mind, especially now that they're being moved around in the Middle East and deployed. It's going to be a very dangerous time there, so keep our veterans in mind, and when you see a veteran, thank them for their service. Anybody else, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Good night, Danvers.
Good night.